This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Calling to order the Southampton Select Board meeting for October 24th at 6:00 PM. Could we all stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the plan of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good. Thank you, thank you. So we have folks here tonight. John is away on business, so he's not with us tonight, but we have our quorum, and we have some guests in the audience, and so let us start with our usual open time for the public. Come ahead, sure.
I'll put it over to the side. I'm here tonight to deliver the two-page document that I read to the Select Board two weeks ago.
Mm-hmm.
I want to enter into the record. The other reason I'm here is because I submitted a public records request on October 3rd, one week before I appeared here. And there were several things of information that I wanted. Lucy contacted me, I guess it was Thursday, and she told me she had most of the material collected, with the exception of the COA. And the information I was asking for had nothing to do with this.
Good.
It just happened that the two things have occurred close together. What's more disturbing is, according to what I was told, Christina Johnson said she could not fulfill my request because Ed Gibson told her not to do anything. Here again, he interferes. This is a public records request.
It is, and I think we'll refrain from calling people's names as we are duty-bound in here.
Well, this had to be, he had to be identified, but he's a town administrator.
There is public records requests, and I know for a fact that Christina had a family emergency last week and was not around for a couple of days, so she may not have gotten to it as well. But beyond that, I'm sure, have you gotten most of your information? You made it sound like you had more than the COA, right?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so you're lacking the portion from the COA that you were asking for.
Um, I'm not totally accepting your explanation, but here again, I'm not faulting Christina.
Okay, but we're not, we're not here to debate between people and personalities, either.
Okay, but this is a pattern that has existed here, and it's wrong. It's wrong. So if I don't get the information, I'll be kind. By next Monday, I will file a complaint. And that's all I have to say. Give this to Joy.
And let me set the record straight.
Certainly, Ed.
The information she's requested that Christina would have to run off of the program, there are no reports, it's not copying, it would have to be run. We have a new staff over there, and both Christina and Kate are trying to figure out how to get the information out of the system.
So it's not being ignored, it will get done?
No, it is not.
May I add something to that?
One point, and then we have other people waiting also.
I understand. Here again, I disagree with that. There was information, I wanted job description. I wanted, um...
And that's from PQB usually?
There were three, oh, the budget, the budget for the state four millimeter grant. That's not off of senior center program. So there's a big difference between saying to someone, "We're having trouble generating the report," and being told not to do it.
Okay, all we've, all we've got is, however you've heard it, we, you know, we'll leave it go as hearsay at this point in time.
Yes, next.
Cindy Palmer, 71 Glendale Road, and I'm here as Chair of the Open Space Committee with good news. Some of you probably saw the Gazette article about the award of the $1.25 million grant, state grant, landscape partnership grant that came to the town and to multiple partners, and was, the lead applicant was Kestrel Land Trust. So that's primarily why I'm here. We mentioned before the importance of having this on the warrant in a town meeting in the calendar year 2023, and I know that process is happening. There are two other individuals here, and they're here only if there's questions from the Select Board, and the two individuals are Bridgette Likely, who is a conservation manager at Kestrel Land Trust, who's been here before, and also co-chair of our community preservation committee, and that's Mark Cassis. So it's really just this wonderful announcement, and in case you have questions, we know it wasn't on the agenda tonight, but we know that time is all clicking along, so.
Sure.
Anything from the Select Board?
Okay, no, I don't know, congratulations on all the hard work. I mean, it sounds like a monumental effort, so kudos to Open Space and Kestrel. From what I read in the paper anyway, not only the amount of money, but eight or nine landowners, is that correct? And three different communities, and obviously Southampton, whenever we get around to voting on anything, we'll be voting on the Southampton portion of the thing, I would assume, right?
Good. And we'll be putting together materials to inform the public of what they will need to know in order to vote at town meeting in December, I hope.
And we will be having some of the funds, we need to do a bit of a match through CPC, is that correct?
That is correct. We need to get, I believe it's $420,000 and more, a little bit more, up to $421,000, that will be CPC funds, and that's why Mark's here, in case you had any specific questions on that.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no, I know that you've been working hard on reconciling funds with the town accountant, so much appreciated with that, too.
Yeah, just for the...
Did you hear him say, "We have the funds"?
Okay, yeah, I was gonna ask, thank you. Yes, Mark, do we, do we have the funds?
We are. Mark Cassis, 19 Fomer Road, representing CPC committee. There's sufficient money within the, undesignated funds within CPC to pay the $420,688 that the town has been asked to put into the two-year project. Again, that's matching, the total project for the Southampton lands is $2.7 million, so the amount that we're actually have to put forward from town monies is about 15% in total, but we have the monies.
And is that going to be it? There won't be any future expenses?
It's two years, I think it's going to be distributed over two years. I don't remember which, one's smaller than the other, but we're, we prove both years' worth, because we have the money now.
So we have to approve it all, but we don't dis...
It will be distributed as needed, depending on when the lands are negotiated with them.
Okay, got it.
I think she's asking, is it looking for more beyond that?
There's, there's no more for this. The reality is there, at one point, once there's opportunity for walking trails and stuff, there may be requests that come in for sort of setting up trails and signs and stuff, but for actually acquiring the rights to the properties and acquiring some, and for conservation restrictions, some actually owning them, there's no extra fees, as far as we've been told. The legal fees are built into that, or will be covered by Kestrel's existing funding.
Great.
Excellent, thank you.
Good, okay. Steven, question?
Process question.
Yes.
It requires town meeting to allocate the funds and to approve the acquisition of interests.
And hopefully that's on the December town warrant.
As we vote on which day we're going to have the town meeting, special town meeting.
Yes, and...
And then subsequently, given that you have a balance sheet to afford this, there's no need for borrowing, you'll just be able to write checks after the town meeting approval to accommodate several, many closings.
Correct. At one point, we thought we might have to do that, but we went back over the books after initial incorrect information. Went back over the books, and we have sufficient funds currently.
Good news, okay.
It was looking complicated, and a lot of coordination for the pressure.
Yeah, having to put out a bond would have been actually very difficult for the town, so this is much cleaner.
Yeah.
Great, great to hear. Excellent work.
No, yeah, truly, congratulations, and you got great, great coverage in the paper, too, and that's, that's relief.
There's a question of whether you need a separate town motion about conservation restriction with the CPC, maybe I misunderstood that. Okay.
Okay, yeah, no, we'll have, as we get ready for, we'll talk about it later tonight, about a possible date for a special town meeting.
Thank you for your...
And we will have a couple more Select Board meetings before that happens, anyway, so if there's other things that have to come forward, I think there would be still time to bring that forward, but I think you've already provided some draft language to Ed about some potential, language anyway, for a warrant on a couple things. So we'll be taking a look at that in more detail, but thank you for coming, appreciate that. Sorry we don't have you on the agenda tonight, we'll get you on an agenda for the next time around if needed, okay? Anything else? Okay. All right, let us move on, thank you. So, we don't have any public hearings, presentations, or reports to the Select Board. Let's go to the Town Administrator Report.
Sure. Just to let you know, the Collins Center is starting to schedule the follow-up interviews with the town employees, starting on this Friday, October 27th. Judy Zedona started sending out the invitations and the date and time slots today to the individuals. The contracted exterior painting for the library portico was completed this afternoon. The portico looks terrific. The contractor, Alvarez Painting, did a very good job. Night and day difference before. I attended the Mass Municipal Association Fall Legislative Regional Breakfast Meeting on October 13th in Beckett. The meeting was very informative and focused on the housing bond bill, the closeout of the fiscal year 2023 state budget, the final approved state aid accounts for the fiscal year 2024 year, and rural issues and potential regionalization of services efforts. The Conan Park tennis courts and the basketball courts have been reopened again for play as the new resurfacing paint and lines have fully cured. The fire extinguishers at the town hall, the highway garage, and police station had their annual inspection and servicing today. The quotes for the flat roof replacement for the 1971 edition of the old town hall police station are due back this Thursday, October 26th, by noon. A tentative date for the air quality testing at the fire headquarters and FEMA trailer at 204 College Highway has been set up for Friday, November 3rd. The Massachusetts State Agency, under the Department of Health, which is for interior air quality, will be doing the inspections and air quality testing. We will receive a full report, and this will be done at no cost to the town. Novus, our contracted IT vendor for the server and Microsoft 365 conversion, has tentatively set up the final file migration to complete our IT platform conversion of servers over the weekend of November 3rd through November 6th. While completing the fiscal year 22 audit, we have found that the town did exceed the $750,000 threshold of spending of federal funds to require, we include the federal single audit along with the regular audit. This will increase the audit cost by $10,000. According to our auditors, we are able to charge the extra audit fee to the appropriate accounts from these federal grants. The two programs being audited for that period are School Lunch and ARPA. The cost for our auditing, for the single audit for each program is $5,000 each. Therefore, to cover the additional cost, $5,000 should be charged to the federal School Lunch grant and $5,000 to ARPA. It is now expected that the town will have also exceeded that, over that $750,000 threshold in federal grant spending for fiscal year 2023, also requiring the federal single audit. The programs picked to be audited for the fiscal year 2023 audit could similarly be charged $5,000 each. Incoming Select Board meetings, November 7th and 21st, and special town meeting date to be determined. Thank you.
Anybody have questions of Ed? I have one in particular. On the very last one, on the FY '22 audit, so they've selected ARPA rather than the CARES Act funds, does that mean the CARES Act will not be audited?
Correct. Not for the single audit.
Okay, but then on the ARPA, so this would be the money actually received during fiscal '22, or spent?
Spent.
I can't believe that we've spent that much during '22.
You have to combine all our federal grants.
Oh, 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 not just ARPA?
Not, no, not just ARPA, CARE, School Lunch, I mean, ESSER counts. I'd have to go back and take a look at when we actually spent the funds for the water main replacement on Route 20. Anything that we got from a federal grant fund during '22...
Your ten, you meant?
Adds up to that magical threshold of $750,000.
Okay, but out of, out of all those potential grants, the total of $750, only the ARPA money is being, and the School Lunch program are being...
Yeah, they picked, the auditors picked two programs within that to audit, and those are the two that they chose.
And then should we assume going forward that, I mean, you mentioned FY '23, and then obviously we're funding money in FY '24, those are likely to be funded every year, or it still hits, it has to wait until we have all that threshold again?
I mean, we can put together a, shall we say, a template of what we have in federal grant funds and try to predict, I mean, if we don't even have $750,000 in federal grant funds, it's pretty safe to assume that, okay, we're not going to spend $750,000. If we've got $1 million eligible in that period, then yeah, to take a wild guess of, and I won't say yes, but you know, where is this project, where is that project, you know, along the way?
Okay, well, maybe it would be good just to have a, do up a list of, you know, what are our federal grants, just for each of fiscal '22 and '23 at least. I mean, we're still in '24, obviously, but just to get a list of who they are, so we have that in front of our mind.
I can ask Bradley for that.
Yeah, just to get a sense of that, because it sounds like we've got to hurry up and find $5,000 toward the ARPA one. Is that something that will be happening soon, and do they give us a timeline when they might do the audit, or?
For the '23 or the '22?
'22.
'22, they're finishing that up now.
Oh, finishing it?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's what I call real short notice here. Either that, or I missed something along the way, okay. So then we may need to go back and put in an ARPA request on...
The $5,000, correct.
Okay. All righty. Hmm, okay, thank you for that. Anybody else have questions? All good? Nope, all right. Any committee reports from your various liaisons, and then we'll keep on moving on. Anyone? Dan, or sorry.
Wish I didn't really like to start from.
Go ahead, Dan.
Oh, I just want to pull up the public notice for the, for the planning board meeting tomorrow night about the gas station, so I get the facts straight, so you'll bear with me for one second. All right, so tomorrow night, the, the planning board will have its meeting to discuss the car washes, motor vehicle gasoline sales, amending subsection regarding the prohibited uses, and deleting some specific wording.
Dan, you gotta speak into your mic a little more.
Oh, really?
Okay.
I apologize. So, yeah, just, just want to say that Wednesday, October 25th, 2023, at 7 o'clock, on the first floor meeting room of the town hall, this room, the, the planning board will meet to discuss, well, it's all related to the potential gas station that's coming to town.
And this is on Route 10?
Yep, Route 10. So that's planning board. The technology committee met last night, and I think it was a good meeting. One of the things noted in Ed's report was Novus' work and their completion of it, and we are really happy where it ended up. We've also started a discussion of how we can help the library in terms of the, there's a, there's a conference room in the library, and we met with Joanna to talk about some technology improvements in there, so we'll continue that conversation. We were joined by someone from Whip City Fiber to ask about the status of the, the request, the, the quote response on, for the MLP, for municipal fiber, and as you may all know, Ed is currently working on that, so when, obviously when Ed has it ready, he will send it out to, to, what do they call it, South Hadley and Holyoke and Whip City Fiber in Westfield. So, that's the report from that committee.
Okay.
And Dan, I know you're not the Select Board liaison, but I was unable to make it to the scheduled Housing Authority meeting. Did you attend?
Yeah, I was trying to think, recall that, recall that agenda, I mean, if there was anything specific that was of importance to note, nothing is jumping out of my mind at this point in time as being significant enough to bring up at this point. Obviously, we can look back at the minutes for the rest.
Okay. So, the only thing that I have to report is in regards to Conservation Commission, and those resignations we'll discuss next. But they, their next meeting is November 6th at 6:00 PM. It is, it is in the air whether or not that's going to be, they're going to have a quorum, because one of their members may or may not be on maternity leave. So that is up in the air. So Conservation Commission is looking for members, if anyone is interested. Greenway is meeting tonight upstairs at 7:00 PM. Community Preservation is meeting November 1st at 5:30, and Housing Authority is meeting November 8th at 5:00 PM, which I also may not be able to make it, because I get out of work, of work at 5:00 PM, so.
Yeah, sort of zooming in as you're driving, right?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Steven?
Great. Dan gave the update on the planning board. The Open Space Committee has already presented their great news. The assessors continue to chug along shorthanded.
Mm-hmm, okay. All right, and then just briefly from me, the Grant Committee is going to be meeting later this week. Still working with the Council on Aging on a, on a grant proposal. We'll get back down around to the, the Fire Department and grant possibilities when we get into new business, so I'll hold off on that. We did have a public meeting last night for the Bylaw Advisory Review Committee that was to look at a proposed bylaw update on unregistered vehicles, and there is a bylaw on the books, and the committee has done some modernization, I would say. It hasn't been touched in a number of years, so various definitions and exemptions and so forth were added to that. There was time for people to write in to the bylaw email, bylaw committee email and provide comments. We received two written comments, and then we had four people in attendance last night, so not a big audience, but at least those that were there provided some very good information. And so as a result, I'm going to probably request that we not deal with it at Select Board level yet, because I think we need to do some revisions of it based on those comments, plus we've also reached out to the Ed Commission in particular to see if they have any particular input that they would like to add to it, too. So until they do, we'll, we'll hold off on reviewing that, so this would not be something for the special town meeting. It'll be pushed out, I think, on that one. So I think that's where we are with grants and so forth, information. And, let's see, next, I guess, let's just quickly do these appointments, resignations, and then we'll jump into new business, and I'll make a motion when we get into that part. So we have before us, Joy, I don't know if you want to take it or I can, just from the notes.
Well, you can go ahead, I don't have a full debrief.
Yeah, we have resignation, two resignations, two significant resignations from the Conservation Commission, from Art Lawrence, who has put in his resignation as of October 13th. Art has been on the commission for a good 10 years and has decided to step down, and then also Marla Hank, who has been Chair of CONCOM, has put in her resignation for Monday, the 23rd, and then has said that she's available by email through the 31st to answer any questions. But the, she has served as a chair for a long period of time, and she's been on the board, on the commission, I believe, around, I don't know, 12 to 15 years easily.
Very long.
So she's been kind of the institutional memory, and is, you know, both of them have worked extremely hard. Marla, I know, has put in many, many hours, and so both of them will be definitely missed, but I think both are feeling somewhat that there's time for new leadership to step up and a younger group to get involved, and so hopefully we're reaching out to the townsfolk that are listening, and I don't know, people that have an environmental background would be great, interest in those kinds of issues would be great, but there is training that is provided through the Mass Conservation Commission that people would be allowed, eligible to take, I think, and I believe the course fee is, is paid by CONCOM to attend those courses.
That's true.
So a lot of that, a lot of their work obviously deals with wetlands and just, you know, preserving, preserving land equitably and sustainably and safely within the bounds of Southampton, especially those that are bordering waterways and wetlands in particular, so.
This is a very important committee.
It's extremely important.
That commission that does not, that keeps on functioning, because a lot of new homeowners or new, anything in regards to if your lands have any borderline wetlands or anything with wetlands, you have to work with the commission on, so there could be delays if this, if this commission doesn't meet regularly. And I just want to also, a big thank you to Art and Marla. They were instrumental in making this commission successful. So I will make a motion to accept the resignation of Art Lawrence, Conservation Commission, and Marla Hank's resignation of the Conservation Commission, effective, oh, Art Lawrence, effective October 13th, 2023, and Marla Hank, effective October 23rd, 2023.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. All right, any further discussion? If not, could we vote, please? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so just noting, just a big thank you again to both of them. Their, their work has been exemplary, and they will definitely be missed in terms of their institutional knowledge and just commitment to, to CONCOM and its efforts here in, in town. We may come back around, but I would like to think that we would need to possibly, given the, what you just mentioned about not having a possible quorum, and knowing that there's usually constant business with CONCOM, sometimes tied to planning board issues, but not always, that we may need to think about putting forth, and we can take that up maybe under any other business, about one of us filling in for a short period of time, just to be sure that they have a quorum to go forward. So maybe when we get to any other business, I might bring that back around, okay?
Okay.
Unless anybody else has any bright ideas about that, okay? All right, moving on, we have another, just a notice of retirement, effective December 31, 2023, from Ed Gibson, and I believe I did read that through last, last week, we had the letter last week and I read it maybe ahead of time, but if we can have a motion to accept the retirement of Ed Gibson as of December 31, 2023.
Oh, so moved.
All right.
Second.
Second, all right.
This is just notice, right?
Notice of retirement, yes, not, not immediate resignation, this is December 31. All right, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and again, we'll, we'll get to it when we get close to those dates.
I don't think we're ready to lose you yet, Ed.
Yes, it's been a long, a long, sometimes challenging five-year period, but much appreciate all the work that Ed has been putting in over the time for serving as our town administrator, and with a little luck, we'll find somebody who can fill his shoes.
Thank you.
Right, and then next, we have an appointment, I believe, to the Historical Commission.
Aye.
This is for Barry Searle, to be appointed to the Historical Commission, term to expire June 30th, 2026, and Barry has put in his application and his note here. He's currently a member of the Board of Directors of the Historical Society, which is different than the Historical Commission, and notes that he's had a lifelong interest in the town's history and also Searle family genealogy. He's been on the Board of Directors of the Historical Society for a number of years... of the Historical Society for a number of years, uh, past 10 years apparently, and has been working on a lot of the repairs and rehabilitation of the Clark Chapman House. Um, and just notes that his, and one of his ancestors was among the first five families to settle in Southampton. And he himself is among the eighth generation, eighth generation to be born on the family farm on Russellville Road. So Barry has put his name forth to serve also on the Historical Commission, which will help them get their numbers up and get a quorum so that they were able to meet as well. So with that, could I have a motion?
I have a new guy question. Um, is there any conflict of interest of being on the Historical Society and being on the Historical Commission? Because doesn't one handle funding for, no?
No, they're, they're pretty separate. One is the, the commission is a town, a town entity, which is what this is for.
Yep.
The Historical Society is a basically like a, a non-governmental NGO type, a non-governmental organization. Um, he happens to be on the board of that, but there's nothing direct in terms of.
Thank you.
They both, they both deal with historical things, but in a different, different way. So to my knowledge, there's no, no challenge there. Yeah.
I move to accept the, um, appointment of Barry Searle, historic, move to appoint Barry Searle to the Historical Commission term to expire June 30th, 2026.
Second.
Okay. Second by Stephen. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Passes Barry as a board judge. Okay. Very good. All right. Now to new business. And I think what I would like to do since I see, at least we have one person in the audience here who I believe is here for ARPA. Okay. And I'd rather not make you sit through a lengthy meeting if that's okay with you. It might take us a while. So.
It won't be too lengthy, right?
Well, no, no. But I mean, we've got a few other issues before we get to all the other things. It's, it's up to you. But, um, we do have, um, a request and, um, a request, I believe, related to Canal Bowling Lanes and two of them. Yeah. So, um, if no one objects, could I just move that up on the, um,
Objection.
On the agenda from the, um, ARPA requests and just move it up. So we hit that and then, uh, that may help you free up your, your evening a little bit here. So please come on up and just, um, give us your name and your address. And then, uh, we have in our, uh, packets, I believe we had already approved.
ARPA request?
We had approved the, uh, the website and I was reading in the, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Introduce yourself. I'm way ahead of you. I'm sorry.
It's okay. My name is Lisa Yarmolkowski. I'm the current trustee for the bowling alley and bar. Um, my grandfather built the bowling alley in the late, the early 60s, late 50s. Um, I, and you want me to, oh, my address is 99 Hoyou Street in East Hampton. So I'm an outsider.
Okay. Yep. No, and I was just going to add, so I started this because we were also looking at ARPA reports and I know we had already granted, I think it was something like around.
It was 3,600.
3,600, right. For website development for the Canal Bowling Lanes. And you've put in a final report on that and you've got about $1,500 remaining on that. So you came in way.
Cause I'm a very good budget manager.
Yeah. You came in under budget. So congratulations on that. And hopefully it's a, a good website. I haven't had a chance to scout it out yet, but, uh, glad you got that done. So now we have before us, um, two new requests. One for septic system for canal lanes itself. And then, uh, this looks like a capital project for more of the Tin, Tin Can Alley Park. So both on the, um, HVAC kind of things as well as roofing, if I'm understanding that right. Okay. So please go ahead and just tell us a little bit about the revenue loss. That's kind of the.
Okay.
Argument I think you were making for us for the ARPA application.
Yeah. And, um, for the bar, the bar was closed for almost 14 months. And that meant that overall, let's see, I just put all these numbers together three days ago, but I can't remember any of them. Um, you have the revenue at the bottom of the, um, uh, the front page of the ARPA application. And then the, what I did was I took the two, um, good years right before COVID hit. I took what we had for revenue there. And the bar, the bar's been a very small part of the business down there, but we've been trying to build it up because it's stupid to have a bar that doesn't make a lot, doesn't make money.
So just for clarity, folks, this is the one that's LMK.
Yeah. Sorry.
Business as Tin Can Alley. So that's, that's that application?
Yeah. It says, yeah. LMK is its real name. It's, um, so I'm estimating the revenue loss for those two years when we were, we were totally closed for, to be $38,000, $38,857. And the math is all there for you. This past summer, um, we discovered that the air conditioning unit, the, the bar is a little bit younger than the bowling alley. It was built in the late 70s, I believe. The, um, air conditioning unit went on the fritz. We used to have a great big air conditioner stuck right in the wall and that stopped working. And it's just, it's getting warmer and the same kind of air conditioning doesn't do it anymore. So we looked around and decided to put in the, um, heat pumps. We had put in a new, um, furnace system a couple of years ago, right? I think two years before COVID hit. And so these are the expenditures that we put in for the heat pumps. And I'm asking to be reimbursed for those. And then we've done the roofs on the, the big part of the bowling alley, but the bar, like I said, is a little younger. So we're going to have to do the, um, roof on the bar. So I'm asking for the rest of the funds to be allocated, to be allocated towards the roofing. Um, and the $25,000 that I understand per organization is not going to quite cover the roof, but it will get us fairly far along. So.
Okay. So that's.
Does that make sense?
That's, yeah. Everybody have questions? We'll hear the second one too. But, yeah. Questions?
Yeah. Question about the, the heat pump. There's, at least from my experience, there's rebates from the state for those types of things?
These, I asked about those.
Right.
And these are, these heat pumps are not the giant heat pumps that do heat. They will do some heat, but they mostly do air conditioning.
Okay.
So they're less expensive than the ones that would have qualified for rebate. Believe me, I'm a big fan of rebates.
Yeah. I was just asking if we should subtract some of the rebate.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. And the, um, from what you've said in here and the receipts that you've provided, um, that amount for the, um, the heat pump was around 12,000 I just saw here.
Yeah.
12,655. And you've actually got receipts for that already. And so what you're proposing is reimbursement for that, uh, due to lost revenue and then the balance.
To go towards the roof.
25 and the rest to go toward the roofing, but it wouldn't cover.
Yeah.
The full amount. Okay. Got it.
Can I, what's my question? And this, please don't take any offense for what I'm about to say because it has nothing to do with you personally or this application. I thought last select board meeting, we made a motion not to look at any more applications that were outside the government municipality.
Yeah.
I will clarify, is Lisa had reached out to me just before the last meeting in, I gotta do this right, September of when the next deadline would be. At that point in time, since we're doing these at the last meeting of the month, which would have been October 24th tonight, I told her that the deadline would be last Wednesday at noon when we send out the packets. So I had told her that deadline before that motion was made. Just to clarify.
Okay. Thank you.
That was mentioned at the last meeting too. You mentioned that at the last meeting, we had these open items.
That we had, we had an open item. We had another open item.
It wasn't clear though, because we hadn't received this if that was going to be sent.
Didn't know that was a packet.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
No. And the reason it was an open item is we have also the, the proposal that had been on hold for a while about the signage, which I think had been another one of those. And then we had understood that you would probably put that aside, but we still had it kind of in there, knowing that you were coming back in with something and it wasn't clear, I think, to us.
I have a selection of things.
I'm sure you do. It wasn't clear to us which, which proposal you were going to be focusing on. So that's why we had you on the list as a, as a pending something under Canal Bowling, um, lane. So yeah. How about your second one?
Unfortunately, the, um, sign is going to go way down the list because, um, we, we decided to do, I decided to do the Title IX inspections for the sewer systems. Um, you may have noticed the for sale sign is gone off of the front of the lanes because we've had it up for sale for about a year and a half. And at this point, I'm trying to work with the rest of my family members to keep it in the family because I'm not happy with any of the, well, we had one group who, um, their offer was contingent on selling two, uh, two motor homes in their house. So that's about all that, the, all, the only people that have been looking at it. So, um, anyway, we did the Title IX inspections. As I said, the bowling alley is about 60 years old. The bar is a little younger. There are two septic systems. The one for the bar passed without a problem. The one for the bowling alley didn't. Um, I naively thought that it would be, you know, a reasonable amount of money at the beginning. And then, uh, the week before last, I went to Heritage to talk to the engineers about all the survey work that has to be done, the engineering work that has to be done, um, the wetlands notice that has to be done because canal sits next to a marsh and it's next to the old canal bed. And so far, even before anybody digs a hole, it's about $13,000. So I'm asking for some, oh, support around that. And then, um, I have, um, I've attached Mark Reed's kind of list of the first set of expenses that are going to come up. And obviously the ARPA funds are not going to cover all of this, but the 25 grand would help or 25 minus the $2,098 that I've already gotten would certainly help quite a bit. Um, the revenue loss for the bowling alley, the, the bowling alley was not closed as, um, I mean, the bar was completely closed. The bowling alley was open a little bit in 2020 and 2021 because we had some seniors who for some reason, they absolutely refused not to bowl. They just came up, so we let them bowl. But you can see for 20 and 21, our normal revenue is probably about 180,000 and we made about 70, both of those years. Granted, we didn't have some of the expenses when we weren't open. The help wasn't there, but it's a big building. It has to be heated. It has to be insured. We pay property taxes. I'm, I'm sure it's analogous to, you know, owning a home and not having an income. So, um, I've tried to identify what our revenue loss was there and I estimated 280,000. We had, um, a significant loss one of the years that had to be made up over the next two years that we were, um, partially open. And because of the way that the timing for the bowling alley works, one of the years was worse than it might've been for other businesses that don't operate on a, like we start our leagues in September and they kind of go through April. Our leagues weren't really interested in starting halfway through the year. So a lot of them just kind of didn't want to come back until September. So, yes.
Oh, I, I recall from, it's actually probably one of my first meetings, we were talking about the sign for the bowling alley. And one of the concerns, um, that was brought up at that point was because you had the for lease or for sale sign up, was it going to stay as a business in town? And, and through your comments, I think you've addressed that concern that was brought up way back then. So I just wanted to.
I have. Um, like I said, I, I kind of ended up in this situation when my mother passed away. I never expected to be running the bowling alley. But the more, it's like one of those things, the more time you put into it, it's kind of like, now I'm getting hooked into it. I wish I could bowl, but I can't. Um, and my mother wanted it to stay a bowling alley. So we're not, I'm, I'm not entertaining any ideas of putting in a warehouse or any of that kind of stuff. And we're definitely, I, you know, in some ways, since I have to do the septic, septic system, I'm trying to figure out how I might be able to do some other upgrades because I think, you know, it's been here forever and hopefully, I mean, we have a lot of people who really enjoy being down there. And I'd kind of like to get it a little bit, I don't want it to lose its retro feel, but I'd like to get it a little more updated. So.
Just my comment back then was when I think of the bowling alley, it is one of the things that draws people to Southampton. So they may come here to bowl, but they may come here and do other things in our town. So it brings people into the town and brings their money into the town. So.
It, I, I've been very pleased at how well it's coming back. So I was a little bit concerned because, you know, people drop the habit of going bowling every week and then the next thing you know, they're happy to stay home and binge watch one of the 700 other options. So.
Do you have any other questions?
Yeah. It may be obvious, but as part of this application, you're formally withdrawing the application for funding for the sign?
Yes. Yes. Believe me. The sign is a, a dream.
Well, it may be a bookkeeper's concern, but we want to be clear.
Do I need to do something? Do you want me to send you an email and say I'm formally withdrawing?
If you would please, Lisa.
Just a record.
Then we've got it. And, and the other thing going for you, I don't believe there are too many candlepin lanes left around in the area anymore, Lisa.
Oh, believe me, I know. I'm trying to get them to do something about that. They, we need a campaign to make candlepin bowling a little bit more.
It's a, it's an honest to God New England tradition.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. Exactly. So I think at this point in time, what I'm hearing you say is you, so with the, um, you'd like to be able to use the balance that you've saved, quote unquote, on the, um, on the, uh, website, which is then around, around $1,500 or something as a balance probably?
Somewhere around that.
It's 14, uh, I think it's 1402.
Mm-hmm. Uh, it's 36.
I put it down there.
3,600 minus 2,098. Who's got the math? Uh, 15, uh, 1502. 1502 as a balance, I think, from the website to add to your request of 22,902. Is that right? Or no? Yeah. Septic system is 22,902.
Way too much.
And 1502.
So these are, what we're looking at are not, these are, requests we want are going to grow a little bit, is what you're saying?
Sorry. Can't hear you again. You just have to speak louder to us here in the room.
Oh.
Your whisper.
This spreadsheet, these lines are going to.
That's the request. The 22,902 for the septic. And so this, this reflects the applications coming in and what was approved. It doesn't show it. Will show on the other tracker list the balances left. So that doesn't show that here. So that if you go up to, um, line 42, number 42, we had approved the 3,600 for the website. And from what she's put in for the final quarterly report, um, expenses were 2,098. So there's a balance there that I'm gathering she's asking us to.
Yes.
Roll over, apply to this particular request. Okay? That's what I think I'm understanding. Right? Everybody with us?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. But I think my only thought, Lisa, is that probably with the, the amount of ARPA monies that we have available as well as, um, equity amongst those that are non-governmental groups that have come before us, we'd probably end up picking between one of these two. I don't know that we could fund both. Um, so, um, to me, I, it seems like, I mean, they're both challenging. Um, one, one question, I guess, on the lost revenue, before I go there, on the lost revenue part, were you at all eligible for like a PPE loan or some of those loans that came out during COVID or?
Most of the people who work for us are, it, it's really part-time.
Okay.
So they're working like, you know, 20 hours a week, 10 hours a week.
You had to have a certain number of permanent employee or full-time employees, I believe.
And none of our employees are full-time. So.
Yeah. Okay.
Um, we weren't eligible for any, any of that. I looked into a couple of other, um, I can't, there's so many alphabet.
There's so many.
Alphabet. I looked into a couple of the other ones and we just weren't, they weren't applicable for us. Like we don't have a restaurant. We have a bar. So they want you to have food and we didn't have food, if I remember correctly. So we weren't eligible for any of that kind of stuff.
Got it.
Those kind of grants. Okay.
Yeah. So if I look through the list of other town businesses, the, the highest award I see is 25,000 for Bishistis.
That's been.
Just to reference.
That's basically what we had kind of internally capped at, at loans for non-governmental ones. Um, so.
Do we get for the, sorry, how much did we get for the website again?
3,600.
Sorry. I'm.
And so the balance.
It's on a different page. That's not in front of me.
It's number 42 on that page.
42?
Um.
Okay. Thank you.
And there's a balance though of 1,500 roughly there. Um, not, not used. So I guess the question is, people, I'd like to hear people's thoughts in terms of which of the two proposals you feel would be.
They are two different businesses. I just.
They are two actually different businesses. Okay.
They are two different businesses.
Okay. So even though they're located at, at Canal, LMK is a separate business in its own right.
Account is different.
Okay. Good point.
So you guys do something, you guys can relate.
There we go. Okay.
So two different businesses, but benefiting the same building, property.
Right. I mean, essentially, yeah, two different businesses, but same ownership in that sense. No? Yeah. Okay. Got it. Okay. Any thoughts from people in terms of, you know, the roofing HC, uh, roofing HVAC versus septic? I mean, I think that's our two.
Is the septic one already costed somewhere? Is this, is this spent?
Couple of emails in here from, uh, Mark Reed and.
All right. So it could turn out to be less than this total.
Oh, no, no, no.
No, 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 no.
No, Mark Reed's, Mark Reed's email is just the initial, um, engineering and survey work.
It was 13,000 just for, a little over 13,000 just for the survey work.
And then there was some other notice I have to put up. It's 3,500. It has to do And then there was some other notice I have to put up, this 3,500, he has to do the team of wetlands and he told me about afterwards. It's just, I, it just literally took my breath away and, I haven't found a way to do it.
What is your number one thing that you need to do right now? Like, if you had the funds?
Well, I'd have to do the septic system. But the building, I mean, it's, it's not a, it's not like I cannot do the work right now, I have to do the roof at some point, I may have to deal with the building. The bar hurt.
Right.
We had a little minor leak and that's just going to get worse if it's not done pretty soon. We did all the rest of the roofs about five days ago. It's a total of 76,000, but you don't imagine what it would be now, the way everybody's invested.
But in terms of what could shut, what could make you stop functioning, I would think would be the septic, right?
Oh, yeah. But, well, no, there's two septic systems. We can repair it and me and the bar.
Bathroom closed.
I'll still hurt, but yeah.
I guess that's a possibility.
Is currently this status that the bowling lanes do not have an approved septic system? It was inspected and failed?
It failed, but he said not, he said that, you know, that I have time to fix it. It's not like they're shut down. You can still use the balance. So this is my first experience, so.
Well, inasmuch as that's a public health concern, regardless of who owns and operates this, I think that plus making sure you're aware of the Septic Betterment Fund, which I don't fully understand, but someone here can.
Does that only help residential?
Is it residential, is it?
Only residential.
I'm thinking it's residential.
Yeah, I think it's just residential.
I'm not sure that it covers our businesses.
But it's okay because I was thinking the same thing earlier.
I got you all excited. I'm sorry, let's stay with the issue at hand. And I'd be.
Anyone live at the bowling alley?
If it would help, it would. Not going to stay in there. You're talking about giving a cat.
We're not counting four-legged creatures, are we?
From my simple point of view, if we want to maximize giving you 25,000, which one of the two would you choose?
Well, I'd choose the septic system and then 2,898 towards the air conditioning. Because I have, I already got the 2,800 for the website.
But we also have to decide whether we, because if we give her more than 25,000.
No, that's the, that's the balance, though, of the.
That's the balance.
Sorry.
No.
The balance would, I just figured it out because I couldn't.
No, sorry, what does?
The balance is.
22,902 would take you to 25,000.
Right.
Yes, that's.
From what she's already spent on the website.
But one could say, you know, we've already given her 3,600 total dollars towards the website.
Of which not.
Well, if you're trying to subtract it, right?
Yeah.
And we're saying we're doing 25K per business in town.
Yeah.
So what, yeah. So what you've got, the 22,902 request essentially, plus, I mean, you know, if it's, I mean.
Bingo.
I mean, I don't think we have to be exact on 25,000. I think we're within a few hundred dollars here, are we not? I mean, it's, there wasn't, I mean, I don't think we made a, cannot consider anything more than 25, but.
The septic system is definitely first.
Okay.
The roof is, I mean, we're going to have to do the roof and I've already done the air conditioning because I have to do it. So I can only tell you that the better place looks, I mean, the better the bar looks, the more people we're getting in here. We're starting to do karaoke every other week. We have people coming in to sing. So I mean, we're going to have, look at some open mic nights. And if, if that's something that, sometimes I feel like we've been down there for so long, people don't ask because we're like a business.
So, I mean, the way I'm, let me figure out the math, the way I'm understanding it. So we've actually, you've actually spent 2,098 on the website out of what we've given you. Add that to the 22,902 request for septic, that gets us an even 25,000, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct.
So I think personally, well, personally, I would aim for the septic and have you deal with the roofing and the HVAC elsewhere, personally. But that's my thought. I'll, any discussion and I'll take a motion, wonder if we're ready to vote on anything?
Do we have the funds? I just wanted to check. Do we have the funds?
That part.
Yeah. I just.
That question. Yes, we do. We definitely have the funds.
That would be egg on our face.
Yeah, even with the consideration of this new tax audit thing that we have to do.
We'll have to add that in, that's, we still have enough funds because we came in under budget on the financial software. If you remember, we had put aside 128,000 toward the software and we came out at around 97. So we had about a 37, sorry, a $30,000 quote-unquote savings on that. Plus, there were two things that had been temporary articles for the last town meeting totaling 15,000, $15,000 that money has come back into. So we do, I've got the figures, we're okay. We're right, right close, but we're right there. We've got that. So we have enough for one, one proposal.
Okay, so I will make a motion to accept the ARPA application for the Canal Lane septic system in the amount of 22,902.
Second.
All right. And could we, I was going to, well, just we need to clarify the balance that's left, if I could ask you to do that. We'd be applying the balance from the other, letting her use the money that was allocated for the website.
Oh, and including, and then, and allowing Canal Bowling Lanes to use the balance of their original ARPA application for their website in the amount of 15, 14,02?
15.
I don't think you want to do that.
No.
If you're awarding 22,902.
22,902.
And she's already spent 2,098.
That's the balance, okay, yeah.
Takes us to the 25.
Okay. So the extra award is 22,902?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, you want to put in there that she, if you wanted to be clear, that she is returning the 15,02 that was not used from the website. You could do that.
Might as well get that gold star.
Okay.
So moved.
Okay, we got it. I think we've got that motion clear?
Second.
So 22,902. We have a motion in a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. And then we will vote on the second one, which I think, could I just have a motion that we will, for the second request, just to formalize it, the capital request on the roofing and the HVAC to.
Oh, and I'm moved to deny the second ARPA request from Canal Bowling Lanes in regards to revenue replacement.
From LMK, sorry.
From, oh, sorry, well, it says Canal Bowling Lanes on the thing. I'm sorry, from LMK, doing businesses, Canal Bowling Lanes, for the revenue replacement capital projects in the amount of 25,000.
Okay.
Second. It's a second?
Okay. All right, all those in favor?
All right.
Aye. Do we want to close on the sign one, too?
I'll say.
Well, she'll write it in.
Oh, she's going to do that paper.
So we'll just take that. We've heard that, we'll take it off the list on our tracker form, okay?
Can I ask a question?
Certainly.
Can I get the funds? Do I have to submit for reimbursement or can I get the funds?
That is a town administrator question.
Yeah. Well, right now, you would have to submit from what they've motioned and, did you vote already?
Yes.
You voted, so that would be reimbursement. If they wanted to retract their motion and second and vote and make another motion to award you 22,902 on revenue loss, then you could get that money upfront.
I see.
Would you be moved to do that?
Would anybody willing to do that? Do I have a sense of the committee here?
Ah.
And then receipts would still have to be.
So if we take, if we take back both of those motions, then we would, we would do it on the revenue replacement and just award 22,902 because we, because the first, does that make sense?
You would just want to, shall we say, undo the motion for the 22,902 for the septic improvements for Canal Lanes? Not necessarily.
Not necessarily the other one.
Not.
Yeah, but that one, but a septic system is for, is to purchase something. Revenue replacement is part of the second application.
I think they both came in that way. I wouldn't.
I think they all came in that way.
I would look at the actual application rather than how it got listed on that chart, honestly.
Yeah, okay.
Because I think it was on both of them, because both of them, there's a very detailed or a detailed revenue loss, calculation of revenue loss on the septic system application itself, which was the 280-some thousand dollars as revenue loss. So in the application itself, it was presented that way. It's the way it was titled, I think, on our tracking sheet, perhaps, but.
It's just $20,000 less than it has tomorrow. And the interest rates, the way that they are heating out.
Okay. So, Ed, could you help us again in terms of the phrasing of a motion?
Well, before we get to that point, I would suggest that, is there a motion to retract the motion and the second?
Move to retract the first motion in regards to the award of 22,000.
902.
902.
All right. All right, motion?
Second.
All right, and second. All those in favor?
I make, oh, all, aye.
Aye?
Nope.
No.
Okay. Motion three to one. Stephen, no?
I'm, you know, I'm concerned that we're reinventing the application in real time. I appreciate that the applicant has made the case under several different rationales, but the request for septic system is clear. The request for other capital items is clear.
Right. Now, and we are, we're still on the septic system. It's just a matter of whether we ask her to turn in receipts as she goes or we allow her the 25,000 upfront and then turn in receipts when the project is done.
I understand that's the objective for making things smooth, but I thought we were transforming the application.
No, the application does state, I am requesting funds to replace revenue that was lost. That's on the septic.
Yeah.
This doesn't reflect that.
And that was.
That's why it's confusing and that's.
All right, so that passed, I mean, it's retracted.
Three to one, it's.
Okay, so.
Now, someone would probably, well, if you, I'll try to make it easy, would probably want to make.
I'm done making motions.
Probably make, make a motion to award Canal, to Canal Bowling Lanes out of ARPA funds for revenue loss, 22,902, but for the purpose of septic improvements and receipts of those septic improvements have to be turned into the town accountant.
Okay. So I move that we accept the ARPA application for revenue loss and the request in the amount of 22,902 and for those funds to be used for a septic replacement project and for receipts upon that project to be submitted to the town accountant.
Okay, I think we have a clear motion. Have a second, Stephen? Did I hear a second?
Yes.
All right, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes unanimously. All right. Thank you.
Hurry, go before they return.
We put you through a bureaucratic process here, but, welcome to town government.
Am I correct in understanding you can't be on any of the committees in Southampton unless you're a Southampton resident?
No, there are certain committees. Generally, that is true, but there are certain committees that don't require.
You can't be a chair, though, right? Can you be, can you be a chair in the chairman?
I don't know that you can be a chair. But you can, you can be on.
I've always heard the.
Yes, you can be on certain committees.
There are a few committees that you can be on and not be a Southampton resident.
Right.
Like Conservation Commission.
You don't want me on that.
She might have a conflict, yes.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, thank you.
Come on, hold on.
Yeah. Thanks for your patience. Okay, all right. All right, let's go back to our agenda here. Hang on a minute. I think our first new business item, Public Safety Building Committee update and request. So maybe I'll try to tackle the update a little bit and, Ed, you can fill in the blanks here, since we're both, we're attending the meetings here. So Public Safety Building Committee met, gosh, was it just yesterday? I think it was. We've been working with HKT Architects. I think I had reported before that they had come out and done their kickoff meeting here. We'd had their engineering firm come out and their wetlands person come out and take a look at two of the three sites they were able to actually get on site, which includes 204 College Highway, which is the current fire station, and Zero College Highway.
Where is Zero?
Right across from Cumberland Farms. It's the big open field, undeveloped across from Cumberland Farms.
Thank you.
The property at 79 Clark Street was not able to be visited. That's the one owned by Marmen Keystone and we were not able to get authority to be on the site, so that subsequently has been crossed off, the choices for the Public Safety Building Complex, partly too because it ranked the lowest in the matrix that we carried out, which was a combination of visibility, accessibility, topography, drainage, et cetera.
Soil conditions.
And soil conditions in particular. So there are two sites in consideration and with that, HKT spent some time trying to, after having gone through all the space needs assessment from the Fire Department and the Police Department, tried to configure a drawing for us of what the spatial considerations would be on each of those two sites. And they did two different orientations, I guess I would say, for each of the two sites. And we have not been able yet to make any kind of a decision, but we all liked the second choice, both for 204, which would be much more challenging, this existing site, even though the town owns it, it's got a lot more issues topography-wise. We'd be talking about a two-story building easily and lots of concerns with wetlands around the area that will take a lot of permitting issues, et cetera. Similarly, with Zero College Highway, we tended to like the second design that they showed us there, which was, again, just a footprint. So it's kind of looking at a 30,000-foot view of a footprint. It's not actually the model or the facade or anything like that yet. That would kind of be the next step. And that is something interesting that is a bit challenging, too. Both of them are challenging in that we do not know whether Mass DOT would approve the idea of a second curb cut along Route 10, which is what would probably be needed in both locations at this point in time. So that's a question mark. And then also because Zero College Highway is not yet developed, it's not clear when all that might happen and we definitely would not want to be putting ourselves into a, right now, the way the design would show it, it would be a landlocked parcel unless the other part of the development happened, is my understanding. And so that is—we're kind of at a standstill right now in terms of being able to move forward. And that property on Zero College Highway has been mentioned as possibly being a donation to the town from the Labrie family, namely Eugene and Jim Labrie. That would be around a four-acre parcel. And although it's been mentioned, we've never had any further delineation of what that really means. So the Public Safety Building Committee has asked that we bring forward the idea that the town administrator and perhaps myself could attend—not attend, but have meetings and enter negotiations with the Labrie brothers to understand what the terms and conditions might be of a donated piece of land. And I'll stop there and let Ed fill in the blanks of what I've missed or misconstrued.
And no, you haven't misconstrued anything. And that is the first part of the request. The second part of the request because of the fact that the residential property where the donation currently exists is three hundred feet back from Route—
Ten.
Yeah, ten. I was gonna say twenty, but Route 10. So they would like to also request that the Select Board allow us to negotiate with the Labrees to see if they may be willing to negotiate to sell to the town one of the four commercial lots, which are up front, in particular, the front right commercial lot. If that happened, it would make this, even though this is right now the top site on the matrix, even more preferable, because we would be able to— and we'd have to work with Mass DOT on this to see if the development goes through, if we could have a second right-of-way curb cut to go directly back to the public safety facility. It would be, you know, be a straight shot and just be used, you know, by either people going to the public safety facility or police, fire, EMS, ambulance is coming out. The other piece of that puzzle is if the Select Board allows us to have that conversation and everything worked out, we could actually pull that public safety building forward a little—a little bit. So it's, you know, more visible and not quite a long, shall we say, run to get out onto Route 10. Currently, the way it's designed, being beat, and it's assumed that that development would go forward, there's one common, shall we say, curb cut driveway, road, whatever, that would go in. The access to the commercial properties would actually be from another road driveway behind those commercial parcels. So currently, if it was just the donated property, emergency vehicles would come out of the facility, take a left onto that common driveway, come out towards Route 10, and then have to take a left or a right. So it's basically two turns. If we were able to have the conversation and it worked out that they may be willing to negotiate to sell that commercial property and we were able to have its own right-of-way driveway into the facility, it would mean they would actually have a straight shot out to Route 10 and then just make the one turn, either left or right, onto Route 10.
And kind of the challenge of where we are is that all there is right now is proposed drawings, design. And I know they've been to the Planning Board at least once, if not more, to talk about proposed development of that whole site, which is a much bigger site, talking about housing and so forth in addition to this. But I think we're at a point where with the public safety complex and the building committee, we can't be hamstrung, in a sense, to wait until anything gets decided on that, which may be many months away. So we'd like to be able to at least reach out to the owners about the proposed donation and, as Ed said, to see about this one extra parcel as well. That would be probably not part of a donation, but a purchase of some sort. And that would then also allow us to keep on moving forward with design work with the architects. Otherwise, everybody's kind of at a standstill. So I think the proposal would be to have Ed—and I would like to offer myself to accompany him to that set of meetings and at least observe what's going on and hear what is possible in terms of that, because we would need to really get that nailed down before we can do much of anything, no matter which way.
Are you ready for a motion?
I could be. Yeah. Yeah. I—
Question?
Uh, yeah. I just wanted to make one comment. And I guess I think—I think this is a good idea because when we're talking about these emergency services, we're talking about their speed of response. And by giving them one less turn, as we may have observed in previous situations in town, sometimes getting those large vehicles to turn, in certain—it can be difficult. So that's a—we want to make this public safety complex as efficient as possible. So this makes sense to me.
Okay. Yeah. Stephen? Yeah?
Right. I would move that the Select Board authorize the Chair and the Town Manager to negotiate the gift and/or purchase of parcels of land from the Labrie family at Zero College Highway.
One second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. Thank you.
And Chris? Guess what? You're on your own for this.
I'm on my own?
His motion said Town Manager. We don't have a Town Manager.
No.
You're on your own.
Correction, Town Administrator.
There was some spell check in the ether working, right?
There we go. Very good. Town Administrator.
Let the record be corrected.
Yes, the record is being corrected as we speak. All right. Very good. Okay, next. We have next Hazard Mitigation Plan update. Some of you may or may not know, we do have a hazard mitigation plan that was done back in around, whoo, I think, 2016, thereabouts. And it has expired, but we had applied for a grant for this many, many, many months ago. And we did get a grant for that. And we basically need to identify a consulting firm of sorts to go out and help us work through that. There had been a set of town officials that were proposed as part of the committee. Maybe not the sole committee, but many of them would be part of this, including Fire Chief, Highway, et cetera, et cetera, Highway Superintendent, to be part of this Hazard Mitigation Plan update. And we needed to go out for quotes and Ed had done that quotation. And we have three proposals that came back, which I don't know if everybody's had a chance to look at them. They were sent around by your email. But I'll just—for the record, I'll note—let me see. Let me just find these really quick here. Hold on. So there was one from—a proposal from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. Hang on a second. One from Ty &amp; Bond and one from Jamie Kaplan Consulting LLC. And that's where we are. And so, Ed, I'll let you take it from there. We have three choices. All are within a couple thousand dollars of each other, the highest being, I believe, thirty thousand. And let me see. The lowest, I believe—
Pioneer Valley Planning, twenty-six—
Something?
Yes.
And then twenty-eight-ish or something like that for Jamie Kaplan, twenty-six, four, thirty-four for Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. So I guess that's where we are. We need to make a decision.
Yeah.
If anybody has had a chance to read these through or if they haven't, you know, it would be—I would really hope that people have had a chance to read them. But if not, you know, we've waited a bit on this. So if we had to wait for another meeting, we could, I suppose. But—
Yeah.
Any thoughts, Ed, from your point of view about how we tackle this? I mean, I have some thoughts about the quality of the different proposals myself in terms of what we received.
And—and they are proposals. We did it under request for quotes. All three would meet basically the brief— qualification of being a responsible bidder. But it should go to the lowest responsible bidder, in this case, provider of a quote. So that would be the Pioneer Valley Planning quotation.
Are we stuck with that? Is it like—
Yes, we are.
It has to be the lowest one? Like, no matter how good or bad they do? Like they—
Well, there—I just said they were—all three meet the eligibility of responsible bidder. Therefore, you have to award to the lowest.
Well, I'd like to just have a little more discussion on that because I really do think—I mean, it's unfortunate if we don't even have to look at the quality of the application—of the proposal itself that comes in.
It's not a proposal. We didn't do proposals. If it was a proposal, you could.
Well, okay. So anyway, just to say that the—the one that at least seemed to put in effort in terms of describing how they would carry out the process was not Jamie—was not Pioneer Valley, it was Jamie Kaplan. But my other question would be, what about timeframes? Because that would be a concern for me. This one—we got a grant on this over a year ago now. And we've got to get this done, I think, within a certain timeframe. And we have Pioneer Valley Planning, I believe, is proposing December twenty-four and Kaplan is proposing July twenty-four. We've got two different timelines, which I think would be to our benefit.
I believe it would have to be—and I would have to go back and take a look at the invitation for quotes that was sent out. I believe the timeline—no. I believe the timeline is before June thirtieth, 2025. So let me go take a look.
Somewhere I have the rules of—I'd have to find it. I've got the—wait a second. I have the—the list that came out when we had to apply, you know, the guidelines to apply for this thing? Because we applied for this through the— gosh, hold on a minute. This is a while ago that we applied for this. And we applied for this back in the middle of 2022. So let's see. Twenty-twenty-two. Gosh, darn it. Notice of funding opportunity. Okay, here we go. Ah, sorry. And of course, period of performance. Well, I'm not pulling it up real quick here, so that's—
You go take a look.
All right. Well, yeah, we—we can also table this until the next meeting, Ed. It's not urgent. Two.
We can take it up at the next meeting.
Why don't we take it up at the next meeting so we don't, you know? And we'll find the details on that. But that would be just a question of mine, is just the timing of it. And then if we don't have to worry about the—I'm sorry, I should have looked that up earlier. If we don't have to deal with proposal and language per se, we're just looking at price, then that's, you know, then PVPC is the lowest price.
As long as they deliver within the required timeframe. If they're outside it, then yes, they could be eliminated.
But the question on the table is, did we specify a timeframe?
Yes, we did.
We did.
Do we have the option to squash the whole thing and say, "We want a proposal now"?
You could. You're just gonna delay the whole process and have it start later, so.
Yep. Well, it's—
Okay. So we'll just put that off for next week?
Let's—let's hold—if I can make just a thought that we hold off on this table. Let's get some back figures in terms of dates.
Do you need a motion?
I don't know if we need a motion, just to hold off. Yes. Why don't we just to—
I move that we table discussion of the Hazard Mitigation Plan update and the quotes received until the next Select Board meeting.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thanks. Well, we'll get some basic dates and just be sure that we know what we're voting on here. Okay, next. Special Town Meeting Date Update. Ed, we've had a couple of dates that we had talked about, December fifth, ninth, and twelfth. And I've heard that December ninth, a Saturday, is probably not workable for the election—or for the people that are election workers that also man our town meeting.
Correct. Yes. For the moderator, all three dates, it was available. For—the town clerk got back to me and said the Saturday date would not work. So it left the December fifth and December twelfth, Tuesday evening, dates as being the ones that the town clerk, the election workers, and the moderator was available. Currently, Norris School could be available for either of those dates. They just asked us to get back to them as soon as possible because they would have to let the SYAA know so that they could not plan to use the cafeteria that evening for any programs.
Okay.
See, how long does Hanukkah last? How long is Hanukkah? Because it starts the eighth. So to be respectful for those people, you may want to do it on the fifth.
Yeah. I mean, I think given—given timeframes and so forth, the fifth—
Dan, I'm having a hard time hearing you at the other side as well. Are you speaking of the holidays?
Yeah. I just asked about Hanukkah and not—trying to not interfere with Hanukkah.
Of course. I hope for the fifth myself.
Okay. So the fifth sounds like a possibility. Now, with—with that, well, should we talk about what that means in terms of, you know, sort of backing it out for warrants and so forth? Or take a motion on the whole thing or just on the date? Do you have you checked that out? Or it's already available?
It's—it's available. It's going to be tight as far as, shall we say, opening the warrant for articles, closing the warrant for articles and getting the—in any information that we need to—to Town Council and getting it back. Because the—at the late—at the latest, this would have to be posted by the constables on November twenty-first to get—the two-week notification out. So the two things I would recommend, if the fifth is the preferred date, is that the Select Board also make a motion or include in the motion for the December fifth Special Town Meeting that warrants open immediately tomorrow and are closed on Monday, November sixth.
Sixth.
Yeah. Which is a day before your Select Board's next meeting. So they know what's coming forward and we know what—if—what you would like to include and would need to be sent along to Town Council, KP Law. And then that would also require, since the second meeting of the month is a regularly scheduled meeting, is on the twenty-first, which is too late to actually approve the warrant and sign it to get it posted that day, would require a special Select Board meeting probably— or it's the end of the week before that.
Or the fourteenth, the Tuesday in between? Or is that a little late?
I would—I would probably say that's probably a little early. I would, you know—you could do that. Or I would probably think of maybe Thursday, the sixteenth.
Sixteenth?
Yeah.
And that would be enough time? So that would be—it would—that would be that the warrant would have come back reviewed from KP Law and we've got the final—essentially the final language approved, right?
Correct.
Okay. How does that sound to anybody? So warrant—from what I'm hearing, so the possible meeting on the fifth of December. Warrant's open now, close on the sixth. And then separately, we would have to have a—another meeting in addition to our regular meetings on November sixteenth to do the final sign-off of the warrant. Does that sound okay with people's schedules for those that are here today?
Wasn't it a special meeting?
The second one would be November sixteenth to actually sign off on the—it's a Thursday evening?
Yeah. I can—I won't be here. But that's fine.
Okay.
Without me.
Yeah. We'd have—well, we need at least three of five to sign off on the warrant.
Correct.
Okay. All right. So if that seems to make some sense, could somebody put a motion forth on that? Following those lines? Anybody remember that?
What'd he say?
A special town meeting? Shall I do it? I can—
Sure.
All right. I don't often do that, but—
I move that the Select Board authorize and designate a Special Town Meeting date of December fifth, 2023, to be held at Norris Elementary School. Warrant to open immediately. Notice to be provided by the Town Administrator. And to close Monday, November sixth.
At close of business?
At close of business.
Yeah, it should be fine. At four P.M., I would say.
Yeah. Four P.M. On November sixth? Okay. All right. And that should be fine for that motion, right? We don't need to put in our second meeting date?
I think ours is internal business.
Yeah. Okay. And that—yeah, so that they close on November sixth? The warrant would close on November sixth?
November sixth, four P.M.
Right. Okay. So with that, could I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All right. If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. Okay. So we're aiming for Special Town Meeting, December fifth. Warrant open immediately, closing on November sixth at four P.M. And Select— And Select Board, please mark yourselves, another meeting date on November 16th, just to sign off on the warrant, should be a short meeting.
November 16th at 6:00.
At 6:00 o'clock, usual time, yep. Unless we hear otherwise. Good, all right, next, proposal for grant writing for the tanker. And I don't know if we have, I have something here, if I could put my hands on it. I think I had told you that we had reached out to Chief Anderson, who is working with a company that does do some grant writing, and he has, I can't put my hands on it, Ed, sorry, he has given us a proposal.
Yes, I think the, I'm going by my memory, I believe the soup-to-nuts version, which is the one that we would like for the grant, was $3,900, but let me go through these.
Right, I think it was, and I believe it was for one federal grant and maybe a couple of state grants, the way he had put that out. Too many pieces of paper here today. So we haven't, the notice of these, these grants.
That includes three grants, one federal and two local, or foundation grants, for $3,900 for soup-to-nuts, where his, that company will enter everything, but would need the stats from the department and, you know, maybe some help from the grand, ad hoc grant committee.
Okay, and the actual notice of opening of the grants for the fire department, emergency services, has not been made known yet, so we're, you know, as soon as that gets done, probably coming up in November, that will be something that we want to go for, and we had talked about, one of the possibilities of that grant would be to go for a tanker, as well as perhaps any other equipment that they may identify at the fire department. But this is our chance to put that in, it's a one, one-time-a-year grant, so.
Right, and the two, two items that would come to the top of the list for the second pieces of equipment in that grant would either be the radios or SCBA equipment, and I have asked our interim Fire Chief, Rich Fazoli, to take a look at that and let us know what their number-one priority would be of those two items to go along with the tanker.
Right, okay, and so this would be, actually, it's from, this company is called First Responder, First Responder Grants, it's a national company, apparently, that assists in doing emergency responder grants. So that would be through.
Maybe for transparency, or because my memory is bad, this is a proposal from the person who, with this firm, not with this firm, but in separate practice, did the assessment of our current facilities and needs.
That is correct.
And we were sufficiently impressed with the depth of analysis and his pointing out the urgency of the tanker situation and the availability of grant funds. This is a good horse to ride, if you pardon the colloquialism.
I get it, yes.
I move we accept the proposal as submitted.
Okay, all right.
Second.
All right, and just for discussion purposes, we had done, we had put some funds aside for the fire assessment study itself, which of course.
My recollection is up to $5,000, or had that only been informally discussed?
All of it was not used, and I'm trying to, I thought I marked this out. Anyway, I believe there's some $7,000 left.
Correct.
In that line.
It's either 7,000 or 7,500, and I can't remember which it is.
But we had, we had budgeted more than was actually necessary for the assessment report, so.
That's the funding source?
That would be the funding source, would be to take it from that account, which, if I could find it, I would tell you, but it's.
Do you need the motion to state that?
Let's vote on the first one first, and then, then we'll make, or combine it with the motion, however you want to do it. But let's, let's vote on the first one first, to award, or to enter into a contract with First Responder Grants, and Chief Russ Anderson. Okay, did we have a second, I think?
Yes.
All right, Dan second? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, and then, Joy, then funding would be taken from?
I move that the funding for the contract be taken from the fire assessment account that has been set up.
Balance.
Balance, whatever remaining balance is in there to be funded from.
Right, I do have it, so it's.
Sorry.
Yeah, I do have it here.
Second.
Just for clarity, so it's account number under the general fund, 015-241-11, sorry, 015-241, no, 015-236, here we go, 015-236-704, there's $7,500 left, so that would more than cover the cost, all right?
You have a second?
Yep.
Yeah, second.
I second.
Give Dan a second, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, I'll be on. Next, dispatch regional MOU, Ed, update?
They're still in the preliminary dark phase of that. It seems to have been going fairly well so far. We're still waiting for comments for an actual MOU or IMA back from the city of East Hampton.
Okay, so.
Is that a second round of comments, or is that any response to our first draft proposal?
What's that?
Has there been a prior iteration of feedback on the MOU, or are we still waiting for any response to our proposal?
We're still waiting for any response from the, shall we say, draft IMA that we sent along to the city of East Hampton.
Before our last Select Board meeting.
Long before our last Select Board meeting.
Yeah, yeah, right. Yeah, okay, all right, so I'm sure we'll be, be kept in the loop on how that's progressing, but it sounds like a lot of the wrinkles have started to iron out a bit in terms of the dispatch going dark over there.
Ian's still pulling out his, here, with a few of them. At this point in time, most of the electronic stuff is working correctly. I know the last piece of the, shall we say, physical changes over there of installing the new security window, I asked for an update on when they expected that to be in and installed, and that's about two weeks out still.
Okay, all right, good. All right, next on the agenda is the bylaw draft of unregistered vehicles, and as I stated earlier, I'm just going to table that for tonight and wait until we have more feedback from the Agricultural Commission and do some editing, and the next bylaw review advisory committee meeting to do some editing, and then bring it forward to Select Board once we have a draft incorporating a lot of those comments. So there's, we had thought we might get it ready for special town meeting, but that's not really realistic, so it will be something that won't come up until the annual town meeting, so we'd like to do it right and be sure that we hear people's comments and get things put on paper correctly, so.
Take care, Doc.
All right, very good, next, Ed, I think Classification Compensation Study, Collins Center update.
Yeah, I kind of did that when my TA report.
Oh, yeah, you did.
Is that, yes, they, they are moving on to the first set of interview stages, and they sent us a schedule for the first 18 of them. Judy sent that out to some of the employees today to see how we can fill that in. It's dates and times for this Friday, next Monday, and next Tuesday. No, excuse me, this Thursday, and Friday, and next Monday.
Okay, good, all right, well, it sounds like that's, that's moving along, and we're all anxious to see what results from that, so it'd be good to, good to know, all right. Fire Chief John Profile, update and search, without John here, I must say I don't have any update on that. We will definitely get something clarified between now and next meeting, if not, well, certainly at the meeting next time, but hopefully some before that, when he gets back from his, his work trip, and get some clarity. I know we had, we had pretty much drafted, or he had worked on the, sort of the profile and the statement about the fire department and all that, as it fit into the town profile and so forth, so that, that has been done, but in terms of actually, you know, setting any application deadline, I don't think I heard that in particular. So we will tidy that up and get that under, under wraps for sure, for the next time as a top priority. Town Administrator's search, as you know, things are in the hands of Community Paradigm Associates. I did check in with them to see how things are going. They've had three or four responses so far, that, you know, at least people are somewhat interested. He did say it's a bit early in terms of people's interest, and that, you know, it's not, not a concern at the present time, and it's basically, they were hoping to get applications in by a certain date, but the way they worded it, I think, is they did it open until filled, but with a guaranteed review of any submissions that they do get by November 10th. So they're moving along anyway, and he felt that things were going okay at this present time, and there was nothing to, to be concerned about, it was still a bit early to get all the network in place and, you know, getting, getting the word out and seeing how well we could talk up Southampton, I guess, or how well they could talk up Southampton. So more updates on that, hopefully for the next meeting as well, okay? Next up, draft amendments for PQB rules and regulations, any update on that, Ed?
I don't, and with John not being here to give it, I know they did vote some of them to go to public hearing.
Okay.
I don't have any further details on that.
So there were a few, if, for people that remember this, was there, there are a few changes and updates to our current personnel handbook that were going to be looked at in particular, and so those are what we're talking about here, and we'll get more news on that the next time. Expense and revenue reports, we have, I think Bradley and Jen have basically gotten fairly caught up, from what I can see, we have expense and revenue reports, I believe, through, through the June 30th period for '23, which was the goal, although it looks like we may still have some reconciliations to do. The way I'm seeing this, there's still a bit more in terms of.
Yeah, there may.
Expenses, not all the revenues maybe are posted yet.
Yeah, there may be some, so July or even August, grant reimbursements.
That come in over the fiscal days, they start.
That would be allowed, correct.
Right, yeah, and that was, I was sort of assuming that if there's any, any major reconciliation to do, it's around the various grants that have been awarded, because as many people know, these are mostly reimbursable grants, so we don't get the money upfront, you've got to wait until expenses are put out, so at least they're moving along there, because our goal is still to try and keep online with our stated budgeting process and getting the financial records for '23 finalized and put out, so we can do whatever we need to do with free cash, et cetera, so. And then we have the expense report out for fiscal '24. Did anybody have any comments or thoughts about how that's progressing?
No.
In terms of the amount we should be spending, this would be, again, through, through the 19th of October, so this is the July 1st to October 19th of our total budget of about $21 million. We've actually expended about $5.9 million, so it seems like we're pretty much on track. There's still $15 million left to, to be spent out of the general fund, so it looks like it's on track, and I'm assuming at some point in time, whenever finance folks meet, they were going to try to meet again with, you know, involve Bradley in one of their meetings and just kind of go over anything that they might notice, if there was something that wasn't, was questionable from their point of view, so I'm hoping that that will still, still happen. Okay, next, ARPA quarterly reports, and again, those came out by email, they're not copied in your package, so if you didn't see them, I may just pick them back up next meeting, too, just to see if you had any questions about them, but thanks to everybody who has submitted a report, there's only a couple that, that were missing, I think, two or three, and I know we've got to do a little bit of work with the school in particular, just to be sure that we're all on the same page, both for the school and the conservation agent, if you may recall, or some of you were not part of that discussion early on, when we approved some salaries for part, for personnel at both school and also the part-time Concom agent, we had done an internal division ourselves of FY '23 and FY '24, just because of the date that we were actually approving their, their proposals, but in reality, it's all the same pot of money to the government, and it can be spent through December of, sorry, it can be allocated through December of 2024, has to be spent by December of 2026. So what I think I've seen on a couple of their, the reports for these entities, especially more so the school, is that because there was allocated in, say, teacher X, paraprofessional or somebody, it was allocated X amount in '23, X amount in fiscal '24, because we're in X, we're in '24, they've jumped to counting for '24, whereas in reality, it's all the same pot of money, and they need to go back and just start drawing down from, from the beginning, in a sense. So I think I'll probably just end up working with Ed and Bradley, and we can do out a, a letter to any, anybody that's a little bit confused, maybe in terms of how they should be reporting on that, so that we make it a little bit easier for them to account for the funds.
Especially in light of the audit.
Yes, especially in light of the audit as well, so the clearer we can be. So we do have, just to clarify, we've got our, our application tracker that Judy manages, I've been dealing with the application decision tracker, and then Bradley, of course, has been doing the accounting for all of this. So we really have three sets of trackers in place, we've got a separate set of files for the applications themselves, and a separate set of files for the quarterly reports from everybody. So I think we've, we've established paperwork, at least, that ought to allow, barring any strange questions, ought to allow an auditor to get into what they need to find out, and I hope we can do that, but I think most, most of the projects looks like they're on a decent track. There are two or three that are related to, I think, the Route 10 water main from the Water Department, probably, and the couple of matches for grants, like that stormwater match that we have put out money for, but we haven't been called upon to use it yet. And again, that is a timing issue in terms of when those are called in during the work that's done, so those are kind of sitting there and haven't really been drawn down at all. We do have, I think, a couple of new things finished, the, as Ed mentioned, all the paving has been done over at Conant Park, so that's been done, the, the portico painting at the library that we just approved is, is done in record time, even before the first report is due, pretty much, and others are seemingly in progress, so I think we're, we're making headway here, I hope, so. If anybody has any questions on those, I'll, I'll send the, I'll update the decision tracker based on tonight, and I'll send that around. And again, that, just for the public, that puts down not only the application purpose, but it talks about, it gives a little summary of our discussion and how we made the decision, the amount of money that we decided to award. So I think that hopefully puts us in a certain amount of clarity here. Any questions on that from anybody?
No.
So then with ARPA, going back a little bit to both what Ed said and Joy echoed a little bit, under the ARPA, so, hang on a second. It seems to me, and I guess, I don't know, if we would have you do a little application request, I guess, too, if we would need to put aside $5,000 right now for the FY '22 audit, right? Are you thinking that we should think about FY '23 now, or just sort of let that go at the moment? I mean, should we, should we put aside, I mean, is, is it real that it's $5,000 each time, or we don't know that?
Well, it's $5,000 for each program, they will pick two programs for the '23 audit, what they will pick, I don't know.
And that might not be for several months out, is that right? I mean, that.
My guess, my guess is it'll probably be around January, February timeframe.
Okay, all right. Well, I think, I mean, I think it might be best just to work on, I'm the one that we know that's before us at this point in time. So that would have been a need for audit funds to audit the actual ARPA funds spent in FY '22 for the amount of $5,000. So if we could, I'll sort of make that a motion, that we add that to the ARPA list, and we'll give it a number and put it on our tracking chart here, but amount of $5,000 to be allocated from the ARPA fund to cover its own audit for FY '22, a federal audit based on our exceeding or reaching and maybe exceeding $750,000 in federal grant money. So, that's a motion?
Second.
Second by Joy, okay. Any discussion clear, anybody?
Nope, very clear.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes.
Do you need a motion for '23, or are we waiting to see the lottery?
I think, I think we'll wait on the lottery on that and see. As Ed said, that may not be decided until early next year, and I think we'll, you know, hopefully as some of these bigger projects that I mentioned get spending, there may be some other money that we'll be pulling
Share the fun.
Pulling back in, yeah. Right, exactly. So, okay. All right. And I guess the last thing on the ARPA request, we've pretty much dealt with everything on there now. I guess the only one that's outstanding still was the one request from the quilt shop, and we still have not heard anything.
No.
All right. I'm going to just suggest that maybe we make one last-ditch effort to get clarity on that proposal, and then on next meeting, if we don't hear anything, we pick it up at that point in time.
Makes sense.
That's the only thing that's outstanding as a holding pattern on our current ARPA list. Okay. Any other business that cannot wait until the next November 7th regular meeting?
Have we received any applications for the housing trust?
Application, oh, for people to be on the housing
No.
No, we have not received anything that I'm aware of.
I'll do more of a push.
Yeah, right.
If anyone's interested. Is that posted on the town website? I don't even, oh my gosh.
I wouldn't have to tell you that. I know we did it up, and I believe we did post it on the town website, although I might have just forwarded it to whomever was going to take care of that, but I can just double check that. But yes, we do have
Because if it is, I'll share it to the community page.
Yeah, I'm kind of thinking I did have it up there, but I could be, would have been on under select board, I think, because it's actually a select board created. Of course, I can't find it right now. Hold on. Well, if it's not there, I don't think it'd be there. Excuse me, not finding it right now, but we will get that.
Yeah, I don't see it up there.
Not sure where that went. If it's there, it'll take a little bit of time to just look for it.
Okay.
So we'll make sure that we get the housing trust information out there for people that are interested in applying for that.
Thanks.
Yeah, Dan?
Did you want to talk about the Conservation Commission?
Well, yeah, I mean, I think I'm a little concerned, more than a little concerned, that we have our two out of five, or six-person group right now, we have our two most senior and experienced people having left, and one person who may be out on maternity leave, and that definitely does not leave them with a quorum. And I think that's a real challenge. So I guess I'm wondering whether we should not figure out a way to step up somebody from here to be part of that temporarily. I'm sorry? Are you pointing?
Yeah.
I'm volunteering him.
Ed was volunteering a certain person in the back row.
Would you like to say something about the Conservation Commission?
Conservation Commission.
First in line.
Okay. I think you respectfully decline, is that it?
Yeah, there it is.
All right. So, yeah, and I guess, I don't know how anybody else thinks about that, but it just, you know, I think at this point in time, the CONCOM agent is the only employee, right? And somebody would need to be sort of supervising his work a bit and signing his timesheet especially, so he can get paid. Talking with Ed, that would fall normally to the vice chair to sign off on his timesheet. So I think that part could still continue, so the person could get paid, but I think it doesn't allow, excuse me?
The vice chair?
The vice chair, if there's no chair, the vice chair takes over.
And the vice chair has been very clear that they don't have the capacity to take over.
Right, no, I'm not suggesting takeover. I'm just suggesting somebody signing the CONCOM agent's timesheet so he can get paid. That's all I'm saying. So it would require every two weeks signing his timesheet.
Oh, but guess what? Yes, the vice chair is second in command, so they are taking over.
Yeah, so that's a challenge.
Unless someone else along the line volunteers to be the chair.
Yeah, exactly, right.
This is a super
Yep, go ahead, Stephen.
This is a super important town function. There are authorities delegated from the federal government, the Clean Water Act, through the state to all volunteer municipal conservation commissions, some with no staff, us with new part-time staff. And it takes knowledgeable people, as well as enthusiastic people, to stay up with the workload and to participate in the training. And it could not be more important to the town to get it right and to do it in an efficient and equitable manner, because commissions that are not functioning well are not a credit to town government.
For sure.
Commissions that function well are an amazing resource and much valued by the community. So the open space committee is suddenly full, and it would be awful to double-dipper or steal someone, but they've been successful at recruiting when finance, ZBA, CONCOM, I don't know which others are carrying vacancies.
There's a few others on our town website, yeah, as well. Master Plan for one and a couple of others.
Well, I'd just say leadership like Cindy has provided for the open space committee has resulted in a full committee.
Yeah, no, that's true, yeah. No, and I think, I'm not suggesting that, you know, as we have done with finance, where we had put somebody from select board on, at least temporarily, so that they could have a quorum and keep on meeting, that was part of my thought. And so I'm going to outright ask, Dan, I know you were on CONCOM at one point in time.
Yeah, I do have my certification with the state for
You've actually done some of the training, right? I mean, you've
Yes, I've completed the training with the state.
Completed the training, so you've actually got some of that background that would fill in for the Marlas and the Arts of the World. And it's a question of whether, you know, you would want to do that for a short amount of time and whether we would agree that that would make sense to have somebody step up to be
Right.
You don't really want to
Go ahead, Joy.
I'll negotiate with Dan. I'll give you two options. One, since I'm the liaison, I can be the interim. They meet virtually, so it's not that big of a deal, which I myself will be going on maternity leave at some point, but I'll be virtual, full-time at some point. But if, you know, it's a confliction with your schedule, then I'm okay with just being, you know, an interim member. Or if it's just too, something too much to take on, I can switch assignments with you for the time being, so you can take on select board, and I can take on another one of your committees for the time being.
Yeah, I mean, if you're willing to, you are a more senior member of
Yes, it's my bedtime, so
Okay.
Make a decision, Dan.
You're a senior member of the Conservation Commission, have much more experience in it, so if you want to continue and turn your liaison role into an active seat, I would just off, I don't know if at any point that becomes too burdensome to you, then we can work snout. If the plan is to get someone to fill the role
Right. I would say, you know, we ought to try this for, you know, maybe a three-month period or something like that.
Yeah, I would say sixty or ninety days, maybe, till December 31st, and hopefully they get a couple new members.
Get organized and, you know, to have a, you know, have somebody there amongst us that has got the, you know, the skills and the training already, it would be beneficial, I would think. But I'm one opinion, so feel free.
I move that we appoint Joy Piper, an interim and voting member of the Conservation Commission, term to expire January 31st, 2024.
We just said December.
Yeah. We just said December 31st.
December 31st.
Thirty-two, okay, okay.
December 31st, 2023.
December 31st.
Second.
What a timeline, South Hampton.
That one day.
Joy would be on for a voting member for that couple of month period while they're looking to
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, motion passes.
Thank you, Joy.
All right.
Yes, I think we all have to go beat the bushes.
All right.
Yep.
Okay, so just to keep things running so that they can have their meetings and keep on, keep on going. Okay, is there any other business besides that? Is it not on the agenda? We've got a couple more things to go, some PCFs and some warrants, and then we're getting close to the end here. Okay. So we have, since Ian is here, we've got a few things from the police department, I gather, here. We'll maybe as well take those up and see where we are. So we've got, hold on.
Motion before we discuss, or do you want to discuss and then have a motion?
Well, let's find out who we got here first. So we got a few of the police, we got several on the police status, so we've got, I think a couple got added here that may not be on my thing here, but we have, so we've got PCFs
I think we had added two, which are fire department
Oh, they were
And the amended agenda.
Okay, somehow I misplaced my amended agenda, but anyway. On the PCFs and PRFs, so we have a PCF for a Marissa Parmigiani, as a full-time police officer, 37 and a half hours a week, step six, $28.83 an hour. Let's take that one separately because the others are a little bit different. So that's, that's
We're looking for a motion?
It's already been through Personnel Policy Procedures Board, been signed off on by both Bradley and John. So this would be a new full-time officer, is that correct? Ian, if you want to pop up and say anything, feel free.
I don't, if you have any questions, I'm here for any questions.
Yeah, okay.
I move to accept the PCF for Marissa Parmigiani, a full-time police officer at 37 and a half hours a week at step six, $28.83 an hour.
Okay. Okay, all right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and so she has a conditional offer of appointment, employment, and she too will be, yeah, she's in there, okay. We have a conditional offer, okay. Good, all right. Next, we have a resignation for Scott Gove, effective 9/12/23, so he's actually already resigned.
I move we accept PCF for Scott Gove, who resigned effective 9/12/23 from the police department.
Okay, all those in favor? Oh, sorry.
Second.
Second by Dan, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Thirdly, next, we have a PCF for Edward Hegelstein. This is a separation, the employee never, never did work, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, so this is
Sorry, let me find that. I move to accept the separation PCF of Edward Hegelstein.
Right, okay.
Second.
Okay, Joy, and then a second by Stephen, okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. And then, let me find what I have here, hold on.
I need to find the PRFs.
Okay, then we have a personnel requisition form, a PRF, for a shared admin person that was going to be an admin assistant to both the police and the fire chief here. This is going to be a total of 40 hours a week, so this would be a full-time position shared between the two, the way I understand this. And we had budgeted this in the general fund, and pay scale would be from $18.65 up to the high end of $30.83. We have a job description here.
Was it done by the calling center? Does it have on here?
No, it was not.
No, but
Okay, are we sending the job description to be reviewed by the calling center?
I believe, how did that end in that meeting with the PQB? It was brought up in the PQB.
Yeah, it's being sent separate from this.
Okay.
I believe that after one of your earlier presentations about the transformation of dispatch, that we invited this merging the two positions.
Yes, it's been discussed, yes.
And given that East Hampton has been unresponsive to our writings up to this point, is there anything about this position that more important premature changes in light of the fact that we don't yet have a structured relationship?
Go ahead.
No, I recognize what you're saying, and I don't have a concern for that, because any way you look at it, we are going to have to regionalize with whichever entity we go with, right? And the actual restructuring of a dispatch center in Southampton is not, will not occur. So with that being said, the structure with East Hampton, I wasn't here for it, but I was in my office watching, and I was, if you'd like me to, well, I'll discuss that, if you'd like me to brief you a little bit on our progress with that.
That would be fine, it doesn't affect this position, and
No, no.
Thank you.
Yeah, because that was related to dispatch, and this is purely for the police department and fire department to share in admin, they have nobody now. So this was a new position that we put in last year's, this current budget for this year.
And was there concern or advice about where they would sit and how that would be?
I had preliminary discussions with the fire chief about it. Right now, the police, the fire department does not have the
Doesn't have the room, so
Room to do it, so we have
It would be at the police department.
We had discussions about it being at the police department until, you know
You're on the same page.
Yes, yes. Just for a point of clarity, the additional 20 hours were added to this as a result of the dispatch center
Moving and being regionalized.
So 20 hours of this was budgeted, and the additional 20 hours will come from the dispatcher wages, okay?
Okay, all right. Could we have a motion to accept the PRF then?
I move that we accept the PRF for a position that would be a shared administrative assistant for the police and fire department.
Okay, Stephen moved. Have a second, please.
Second.
Second by Dan, okay. All those in
Can we amend to just add the integrate for $18.65 to $30.83 for 40 hours a week?
I'll accept that amendment.
This is the PRF, it's not a person being hired in yet, right?
Yeah, it's the PRF.
So it's a range?
It's a range, yeah, between the range.
It's the range, yeah.
Yeah, for 40 hours a week. And the funding sources is from two different places.
The funding sources are three.
Three different places.
Right.
Can we name those three different places?
Sure.
Sorry.
Police admin line, fire administrative line, and communications wages?
Yes.
Okay, so everybody kind of clear on that?
Yes.
Hoping our note taker will get that all clear.
Luckily, it was all there. It'll get taken from the video, but sometimes you can't hear things or whatever, so
Yeah, right, just to say, it's
It's actually probably more done for who did the motion and who did the second.
Right, okay. So basically just the pay scale, as noted, varying, starting between $18.65 to $30.83 for a 40-hour week.
Yes.
Funding source, three different sources. Okay, all right, so we have a motion by Stephen, second, please? Did I have a second?
Dan seconded.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, thank you. Thanks, Ian, hope that
While I'm here, do you need any updates on the dispatch center?
Do you have any?
I do, I can briefly tell you because I wasn't here when you were discussing it.
We had picked it up earlier and said that there wasn't too much moving
So as far as the, let's talk operationally first. As far as operations go, things have been going rather been going rather smooth, I'm happy to say I haven't received any complaints, whether from the public or from personnel. There are certain things that we have to iron out, but it's very minor, nothing that just requires a little, just simple phone calls back and forth to the, to the Dispatch Center, and that's it. So, I have to say, the redundancy in the lobby with the, the means of communicating is working, people are using both forms of, of communicating with dispatches remotely, and, you know, our, we're, yeah, it's, it's change, and it's more change for the officers, they have to do a little bit more things, so that, they're getting used to that, under an emergency, under these emergency conditions, they're getting used to that, and that's working out all right. So, you know, I'm, I'm generally pleased so far with the, the transition. As far as administratively, I know that they are working on a inter-municipal agreement, in fact, I received an email later today from Chief Alberti with a rough draft that I have to get over to Gibson and, and review, I haven't even looked at, in fact, I opened it up when I was here, and that's why I was distracted when you nominated me for the Conservation Commission.
We elected you, too.
We almost pulled it off.
Almost pulled it off, too.
So, so I would say that there's progress being made in that respect as well.
Good, and here's the, from what Ed said, the, the final, yeah, reparations, whatever, on the, on the lobby itself, the, the screen and all of that is still.
That's still, we're still waiting on that, that, Ed reached out to me maybe about a week ago and said it was coming within about two weeks, so, about a week and a half, or so, I imagine that they're going to start work on that.
It may be way too early to ask this question, but any details on changes in response time?
I don't have any, you know, statistical data for that, but as far as my own observations.
Sure, we'll take those.
I can say I, I don't, I don't see any, and the reason being is, those calls are now being directly received by the City of East Hampton's dispatchers.
Yep.
And they have direct communications, so it's the same process.
Yep, thank you.
If anything, there's a delay in administrative calls to the Police Department because people have to leave messages and the officers have to, you know, retrieve those messages and call back, but that's the only delay. As far as emergency services, I, I can't say that I've, I see any.
Thank you for that.
It's the same process.
Yep. All right, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Ian, appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Yep, all right, we've got, let's go down, and we've got one more right here.
Administration.
Yeah.
I move we approve PCF for Michelle Murdock, temporary Veteran Service Officer, extension through November 30, 2023.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, if not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did we take up the assessors' PCFs?
No, we're going to go back to the assessors, ma'am. So, go ahead, Stephen, you're.
Oh, I'm the reader today, I'll go.
Well, it's, you're, you're liaison, so I think we've got.
Sure, from the assessors, yeah.
Some information that you need to help us understand here.
A PCF for Janine Domina.
Domina.
Domina, Administrative Assistant, wage increased to eighteen dollars seventy-six cents an hour from eighteen seventy-six to twenty-one seventy-five.
Actually, twenty-one seventy-six on this one.
Yeah, well, on the, on the form, it's twenty-one seventy-five, I think, what's it, Bradley's signature crossed out on the form itself?
Okay, crossed out on the form, I don't even know what.
All right, so this is, this is a same number of hours, twelve to fifteen hours, is that right? And can you tell us, I mean, what it says here is adjustment requested, is the employees taking on, perform a greater, greater role with more tasks?
Right, long-serving employee who's now working under a temporary assessor, and is performing, you know, everything but what a certified town assessor would be doing, so there's a lot more responsibility.
Do we have any, I guess whatever discussions you've had, I mean, this is a, I'm not totally opposed to the idea, but I'm just noting that the current step is a step seven, and this is quite a big step increase to a step twelve.
You know, the general consideration was years of service, performing these activities, and in light of the transition, the need to hang on to our experienced employee and compensate them according to their actual experience beyond the, solely the years here in this, in this position.
Okay.
I'd like to share my thoughts on this, it sounds like they're doing extra duty, to me, this may be better to increase their allowable hours versus the increasing their salary so that they can perform more of those duties, and then when we get the assessment back from Collins as to what, what a benchmarked salary would be, we, we could make an adjustment based on that.
Yeah, but could they work those extra hours, is the question, too?
Exactly.
Might be a question of availability.
That's not often.
Since they were hiring a second admin assistant to fill in the times that the office is uncovered, I would guess that that isn't an option.
Probably not an option, yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm just going to remind the Select Board that two years ago, not this past year,
when the Select Board voted to move the employees one step, instead of a call of the previous year before that, the Select Board gave the direction to take a look at everybody, where they were on the step scale, and move them as far as possible to where their experience might be, with the caveat, and I can't remember which it was, was the cap was a twelve or thirteen percent increase, that was done. I would say, to, in my mind professionally, to consider this, is the Select Board should not be considering one person at a time, but if they're, if they wanted to do something like this, they should really take the direction of going back again and taking a look at everybody that was moved, you know, everybody, including those moved two years ago, and saying, okay, those that did not get moved all the way to where they should be, what is now that cost, or we're willing to do that, what's the dollar amount to go, whether it's five percent, ten percent, twelve percent, what have you.
So, are you suggesting hold off on this until we are able to do with it with more employees?
I think, in my opinion, that if you're going to take a look at this, you should take a look at all the other employees that are in the same position.
Now, you're talking, yeah, okay, so are you talking about?
The same position, okay.
Everybody in grade two, is that what you're talking about?
No, I'm talking about everybody.
Well, I mean, what's the point of us doing that with the Collins thing happening, and they're going to be doing a compensation review for us? Why would we want to tack?
Then why would you want to do this?
Yeah.
In isolation.
Well, because I think they're, they were trying to make the point of, of the extra hours worked and extra responsibility because we don't have a full-time permanent assessor.
Well, I understand that all of this has been shared with the Collins Center, if they provided any feedback on this structure and pay scale?
It'll come in one feedback, it'll come in a report.
It's not individually, it's going to be one report coming in, I mean, this did go to Personnel, PQB, whatever.
Right.
Personnel Policy Board.
Yeah, and, and if it was new tasks and different tasks and added tasks, it should be, it shouldn't be an admin assistant at the same grades with different steps, it probably should be a different position, different grade.
Yeah, so.
Well, there's also crept in some ambiguity about title and job description, right, as things have evolved, and, you know, the work that's being performed is certainly not administrative It's above and beyond that, and that's why the proposal also includes the creation of an assistant assessor position, because that's really what our incumbent staff are doing. So, you know, I take your point, this is a one-off, and it's already created some ripples in terms of equity across the whole staff, and, and I appreciate that concern.
But on the flip side of that.
The flip side is that we need to maintain what we've got, the precious experienced staff that we have, bringing in the revenue to run the town.
But the flip side of that is I have not seen anything out of the Board of Assessors to move forward with a consultant principal assessor. So, out of their inaction, now they want to create an assistant assessor, and that became another issue the other night because they were trying to do a PRF and get a grade study done for an assistant assessor, however, on the flip side of that, they had taken the principal assessor's job description and removed tasks from it. Now, how can you be someone's supervisor if you've had those tasks removed that your subordinate is now doing? You can't review that. So, they're all over the place with this, they need to figure out what they're doing and head in one consolidated direction.
So, so everything that's underneath this paperwork here, as I'm looking at the package, we've got a job description for an administrative assistant, grade eleven, and, so is, is this what would, is this misnamed, this job description that follows the, the PCF? Is that what should be the assistant assessor, rather than administrative assist? I'm, now I'm.
I have no, I have no idea, we don't have, we don't have a greater level.
I, I take that back, those are Roman, never mind, Roman numerals, that's grade two.
Okay.
There we go, grade two, so that putting the job description for the current person, but on our list here, it looks like we've got a PRF for an assistant assessor and a principal assessor, and I don't see those in my.
I believe those did not get approved by the PPPB.
Okay, so they aren't in the package, okay.
Correct.
So, all, okay.
I guess making confusion really is like, when I think about steps and grades, is when you're, you're in a grade, you move up steps based on the years and experience you have in that grade. If this person is doing duty, taking on tasks that are beyond that grade, they should just be in a different grade.
The grades are done by job description, so then you would need a new, new job and a job description.
Yeah, I'm just saying it just doesn't make sense based on how we use steps and grades.
If I can provide any help here, and I think this was an attempt to do what was possible in the short term.
I understand.
To help provide continuous coverage for the office. At present, the board members are covering some number of hours. I think that, in fact, the assistant assessor set of skills was written with consideration for what our current staff person is actually doing. So, I'll admit to a little confusion myself, that I think it would be reasonable to put off this large increase, even though it is really important to our staff continuity, and, and look at the package, because I really think that our current staff is better described by the assistant assessor job description. If our Chief Personnel Officer sees some trouble between the assistant and principal assessor descriptions, we need to take another look at that, apparently, the committee already has expressed its concern about that, but they're here for our approval, I guess.
But this, this particular one has been approved, the, has been approved by both the accountant and the PQB chair, from eighteen seventy-six to twenty-two.
Well, it's been approved by the accountant for the funds being available, the funds are available because they were supposed to hire a second administrative assistant to cover the office hours. That has not been done, so there are funds available.
Is that, they could hire a second person in the same position?
Correct, but what, one of, one of the issues here, if you want to have the open conversation about it, is the office is not staffed the same as Town Hall is. Therefore, the Treasurer Collector's Office and the Town Administrator's Office gets the complaints when people come in and there's no one staffing the office, and that's why they were asked to, okay, and the funds were approved to have a second person doing the same position to cover the hours that the first wasn't, so it's staffed Monday through Thursday from eight-thirty to four.
Wow, so how do we send this back to be fixed? How do we send this back to be fixed?
I mean, it's the, what is the fix is the question.
I would leave that up to the committee, to come back with something that smart that out. Well, it seems like we need to have.
I want to get whoever is doing this job in the assessor's office, because there's only one, you know, employee besides the board members, I want to get them paid what they're worth, you know, all the tasks that they're doing, but it needs to make sense, and right now, the way that it's done now doesn't make sense to me.
So, what is it that would help you have it make sense, what do you need from the assessor's office?
Right now, they're, they're going up four steps in the same grade, doing, but they have a different job description, they have different tasks, so that doesn't make sense to me.
But they, they don't have, isn't that the issue, they don't have different tasks, do they? Isn't this the current job?
They're saying that they're doing more, they're doing.
Well, they're doing more, I mean, and for people that are, you know, filling in for, well, okay, so we've got this temporary principal assessor, right, who's, we keep extending because we can't find anybody, recruit anybody, and then the hours that he's there, I'm not sure how long, I'm forgetting what his hours are, number of hours that he does per week, I don't know.
I think David's in twice, you know, twice a week.
Yeah, it's very, very minimal in terms of his ability.
Is there a difference between a temporary principal assessor and a contract principal assessor?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, and that was part of the problem, is remember that somewhere we had to put out seven thousand dollars in ARPA money to cover him probably through maybe next month at the most.
Mm-hmm.
Because of, of a misclassification in the budget.
Right.
For how he was going to be brought on, or what the, what the discussion had been at budget time about contracting versus a temporary assessor, so.
It's, yeah, so the, the Board of Assessors asked to move all the wage funds for the principal assessor into the contracting line.
Yeah, which left him not able to be paid, so we had to cover it with ARPA money temporarily. But I mean, you know, and, you know, just to say, I mean, it's, you know, it's a, and kudos honestly to the, to the Board of Assessors that are stepping in, I mean.
Oh, absolutely.
I've seen members that are sitting in there, you know, answering phone, and there aren't many that, many committees or commissions where the members come in and work to cover an office, so, and, and so thanks to all of them that are, that are doing that, but I think we need to be really clear on what we're being asked for here, and if this is, I, I'm, I have to say I'm a little bit confused, I have, I have no problem with, also, as with Joy, I mean, paying somebody what, what they're worth, and we have certainly set precedents before of helping, you know, with people that are filling in temporarily, covering, for example, like in the Water Department or elsewhere, Fire Department, wherever, where we're putting in an extra lump of money to cover them for a short period of time, but that's not what this is.
Yeah, this is, exactly.
That's not what this is, even though the person is doing.
That's my concern, too, that's my concern.
More duties, so somewhere there's a.
It has been framed that way, you're right.
Yeah, and so, so just, just for clarity, this, so this position, though, because it was an existing position, as the assistant, hello?
Administrative assistant.
Administrative assistant.
Maybe the fix is asking for a ta, like, you know, for the next three, sixty days, instead of, you know, having, you know, an increase for the next, however, give them a timeline, or give us a timeline.
To.
For her to get paid a little extra for the duties that she's doing since they don't have it, but I just don't want to do it in perpetuity.
But this assistant, administrative assistant position, as an existing position, would have been one of the ones that was gone, that was gone, that was sent over to Collins.
Yes.
As with other, other others that are administrative assistants, I mean, yours is an administrative assistant person, right?
Right.
There's two or three others perhaps that are in that.
And some are in different grades, yes.
Different grades, yeah, given the, the complexity of the job, or the confidentiality of it, or. Given the complexity of the job or the confidentiality of it or all of those kinds of factors, right? So the position as it exists for the admin assistant is over with Collins, and we'll get some reading on that when it returns, but that's going to be not until early December. So.
And I believe the title of what there, what exists today has been administrative assessor.
But that is not, that's not an actual position that we have.
Right, that's not what the job description says.
Yeah.
That is not what the job description says?
No.
No.
Administrative assistant.
And this is the little tweak and game that some departments have played along the way.
Game.
I will, okay, so.
I don't, I think we've got an experienced.
That they have tried, they have done little things like changed the title even though the job description says something else.
I'm not going to focus that on the assessors. I think we have a dedicated and inexperienced.
The whole thing and get a little more work from both the assessors, Board of Assessors, and.
Get just a little bit more clarity.
Some understanding where the Collins group is.
Yeah, but at the same time, we aren't going to get that until mid-Decemberish, maybe.
Do they have all of the material they need to make sense of it?
They've got this job description, the current job description, so any of this.
There was a report on where the Collins Center was earlier in this meeting.
So the assistant assessor position hasn't been through PQB and to us yet to even go to Collins, am I right? Assistant assessor. That position doesn't exist as yet.
It does not exist, correct.
All that Collins would have is the one here that's the admin assistant to the assessor.
And the principal assessor.
And the principal assessor. They have both of those positions, that's all that they have to go through and rate and score. So I think it would be better, honestly, I mean, I hate to throw this back, but I think it would be better to have the assessors' group just get all, get themselves on the same page so that they understand exactly what some of the repercussions are here and what they're asking for, and then come back to us, you know, next meeting or whatever, whenever they're ready. I mean, this had some level of approval already through PQB. I mean, I think, I think they're, you know, I'm not in favor of going through everybody's position to see, just because we act on one, to go through everybody and his brother and figure out all the salary levels again. I mean, that was an arduous exercise that will take us weeks. It's not something that's done in one night.
That's correct.
So it's usually done more appropriately at budget time, which will be January, January, February, we'll be looking at everybody's salaries anyway, but.
But the flip side of that is once you take one individual out of that equation, you have to think about the morale and the impact to all the individuals that are in the same situation that you haven't taken up.
Yep.
So that's why, what I was, yeah, I mean, if anything, I would, I would be willing to take a look at others in that grade that fall into that same admin assistant type position, but I can't see doing across the board the whole breadth of town employees. So that would be my commentary. So at this point in time, could, I think Stephen, you started to make a motion. Would you finish that motion to table this for tonight?
I suppose I will. I move the Select Board table consideration of the PCF for Janine Domina, the PRF for an assistant assessor.
We don't have those two, just the first. Those don't even exist.
Right, well, it's on my agenda, so.
They didn't make it through PQB as it turned out, so those.
Table any action on the PCF for Janine Domina administrative assistant wage increase.
Okay.
A second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Discussion, is this, is tabling the right operation performed?
Well, and to be able to bring it back with more clarity, I guess, is the, I mean, tabling for tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just to clarify that amendment, the motion, okay. So do we have a second? That was Joy. You seconded that?
Yeah, yes, I did.
Joy seconded it.
For discussion, if you can also have them, this isn't part of the motion, but have them on here where the table is, said admin assessor, and then they're asking for an increase for admin assistant, but then they're requesting a new position for assistant assessor. That all needs to be clarified.
Where do you see admin assessor?
On the table.
The wage table.
Just said that doesn't exist.
It doesn't, that's what we're saying, the paperwork is.
Yeah, that's why we're asking for clarification.
I'm sorry, I don't have the table. What are you looking at?
It's in your emails, the PRFs itself, so this is the wage scale.
Ed, I need the one pager on getting onto the new system.
This is the wage scale for grades one through six and through, through all the steps for.
Right, but there is no admin assessor.
There isn't, so we're just saying that that's the naming even.
That's where we're just asking for the clarification.
In different places all over the place, so if.
And that was one of the big motivations because the current staff person is doing a fairly sophisticated.
Understood.
Job that is not generally well-described as administrative assistant. Might be better described as assistant assessor. But we've got a now and next year and proper structuring of the department to be considered. Ed's made that abundantly clear.
Yeah, but I think just, just for clarity here right now, I mean, we have, on the paperwork itself, it's talking about admin assistant, okay?
Yes.
On the PR or whatever, PCF, and then the job description that goes with it is administrative assistant. On the chart, which shows the step change that is being proposed, it's actually labeled admin assessor, and that's not, it's not a position that exists, so the paperwork doesn't match itself.
My point is, exactly.
So that may be a future.
It doesn't match, but that's not from the board.
I believe it came from the board, not the, not the chart, all the narrative underneath it here, so.
Well, it is their belief that the current staff person's title is administrative assessor, and they're trying to bring some rationale to the job description.
My first, for what we have on the record, to my understanding, we only have an administrative assistant position in that office right now until, and if they've done a job description and put it before PQB last week, it did not come to us, so that tells me, without John being here, but it does not look like it made it through. Once that gets discussed and comes to us, then that becomes a possibility to recruit for the admin assessor.
I think that's a fine way to see it. We agree on what's come before, absolutely, and we agree that there exists now substantial confusion about the skills requiring to keep that office open.
Okay, all right, so I think we have a motion and.
A second, and it's up for a vote.
To hold this off until we get some clarity back from the assessors, hopefully for the next meeting. Okay, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, so this PCF is not acted upon at the present time. We have two last ones that are in our package, but not, I was on the amended agenda, came in late here, and I think I want to just understand, these are both for the fire EMS, one for Lawrence Felix, and this is an as-needed firefighter EMTB at $1692 an hour. That's an ad-needed, as-needed fire EMT. This is not a, uh, hang on, if I got the right number here, hold on just a second. He's only apparently going to fill open shifts, it's not an addition to the budget, it's part-time, non-benefited. Okay, that's the PCF we have for Lawrence Felix. Could we have a motion on that one, please?
I don't have it in front of me, so I don't.
It's in our package, online package.
It's online package.
Okay, I should. Yeah, we were trying to cut down on some of this heavy-duty paperwork, so people will need to focus on this a little bit, but yeah, so it's under Lawrence Felix, so part-time, non-benefited, as-needed firefighter EMT.
We don't get, we don't get, in this particular case with PPBB, meaning on Thursday night, we don't actually get the paperwork until, like, the Friday or the, you know, the Monday, so.
The question I have is, the next one's for a female, wondering why there's a pay differential.
Which one?
Dakota Pendelphini?
No, let's finish the first one.
But my question is to do.
Two different positions.
Two different positions, let's.
Okay.
If you look closely.
Okay, that's the part I'm missing, where it's different.
Let's do the first one here.
Thank you.
So Lawrence Felix first, again, part-time, part-time, non-benefited fire EMTB, on-call as needed, will fill only open shifts at $1692 an hour. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Joy? That was second?
Second.
Second by Stephen, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, there it is. Aye.
All right, it's approved. And the next one then is Dakota Pendelphini. This would be part-time, sorry, part-time, non-benefited. This is an on-call per diem, will pay only as when needed for fires, and this is a probationary firefighter at $15 an hour. He's not an EMT, and he's on probation as well.
Correct, so moved.
As with hired. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, I didn't see the delta between the two.
Stephen, Stephen, yeah, you have a second? Dan, second?
Second.
Okay, so that answers your question?
Yes, thank you.
These are two different positions and types of hire, okay? All right, if no discussion, okay, all those in favor?
Did you, I'm so sorry, did you do the Michelle Murdoch one?
We did when you were out.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, we did, we did approve that. Okay, I think that guided us through all the PCF stuff. We don't have any others that I'm aware of, no licenses and permits, and Stephen, if you'd like to read the warrants.
My reading exercise.
Yes, your reading exercise, yeah.
Shelley, fill in the blank for W24-16, since I have that in front of me.
Yes, please do. I kept getting interrupted and it should have been added on the amended one.
All right, so folks, take your nodos. The warrants include P24-13 in the amount of $328,727.45. That is a payroll warrant. Another payroll warrant, P24-13A in the amount of $2,947.60 payroll warrant. Payroll deduction warrant, PD24-13 in the amount of $54,000, $54,502.87. W24-14 in the amount of $69,234.88 is a vendor payable warrant. Next is a payroll warrant, P24-15 in the amount of $322,746.32. And a pair to wind up, vendor payable warrant, W24-16 in the amount of $278,625.12. And a correction to that, a separate 16B in the amount of negative $20.
All right, anybody have any questions on the warrants in general? I think they are usually pretty clear here in terms of the expenses. Sometimes there's something that pops out at you that is a little bit strange. I know I queried Ed on one thing and got that cleared up. So if you do have questions on any of those, it's probably easiest just to send an email to Ed.
Yes, Chris had some good ones today that made me actually work hard to figure out.
Just a question, I mean, just, you know, vendors that I did not recognize and just, not the usual vendors, so just clarifying what kind of expenses those are all about.
I appreciate that, Chair Chris, because I'm a newbie and they're all new to me, but I found it a very educational experience reviewing these warrants, you know, 15, 20 minutes with Bradley, and I'll ask questions at random, and he's very facile with the answers and very open as well, I should say, so I'm, I'm learning. I don't expect there to be errors and problems. I'm learning how complex an operation the town really is.
Well, and note that, you know, they go through a couple of, couple of eyes before you see them to even sign off on them.
Thank God they do.
Exactly, so, good, all right, well, thanks for that. And next, we have a set of minutes to approve from April 6th meeting minutes. There are a few typos and corrections.
For the sake of moving things along, I move approval of the Select Board minutes of the first April 6th, 2023.
We have a couple corrections, though, we'll.
Shoot them at me.
I guess we can take a second first, and then we'll open for discussion, and then I'll mention.
Yeah, the only correction I have is fixing Caitlin's name.
I'm sorry?
Fixing Caitlin's name.
Yeah.
Because Caitlin's name, I think there's a correction to Caitlin's Way.
Caitlin Way as well.
And a couple others, Chris.
The Board of Health.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so let's have a second, so we, did we have a second? Stephen moved, we needed just a second first, then we'll discuss this, so Ed has all the corrections.
Second for discussion.
Okay, so as we said, Board of Health, Caitlin Rook's name spelling, Caitlin Way is farther down, somewhere in the narrative down there, that just needs to go from a, go to a correct spelling, and I think there's something under the Board of Health about the health, sorry, the ARPA funding.
Yeah, you had used.
It says used $30,000 of ARPA funding, that's not correct. It's been, we had approved $30,000 of ARPA funding, they have, had not used it at that point in time. We had approved $30,000 of ARPA funding to cover the contracted inspection fees for the current year. And then I think the other one was just on the, we've gone around on it a couple of times today, but the actual amount on the page two, I think it is, on the additional amount of money for the conservation agent, we've got a little bit of discrepancy between $5,450 or $5,000, hello, 405. So it was, I think just hearing the tape was a little bit fuzzy, I'm believing it's $5,405 rather than 5,450. So that one definitely would need to be corrected. So with those corrections, and if anybody saw any else, anybody else, we can, we can move forward, I think, but I think those are.
Do you want spelling corrections?
Yeah, yeah, there should be, these should be, yeah, we.
Chair follows Donna Whiteley Finance Committee.
Okay.
Page two.
Finance Committee, yeah, under Donna Whiteley, yeah, Finance Committee. Yeah, finance spelled wrong, yeah. Okay, good, anything else? I think those were the main ones there, so. All right, so with those corrections, I think we have a motion and a second, but if we can note that that's with the corrections that have been.
Yes, of course.
Announced here, okay, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you. All right, just a couple things under pending items. I think the main thing is just that we know that there's been some movement toward is that whole Department of Environmental Resources on the Green Community Grant. I'm hoping that we're going to hear something from them soon, since we've put some ARPA money toward that as well for other costs. Do we have any clue when something is coming back to us on that end?
What's that?
The Green Communities Grant, info where that's at. Now, I know you said EverSource had done their thing and had gone off to DOE R and.
Yeah, I just got the last piece of the puzzle from the company on the, the school assessment from EverSource, so.
So that has to go to, and does DOE R approve our four projects as one package then? Is that?
I would say they approve them as four separate.
Four separate ones.
Projects, because they will look at each one of them to see what the energy savings ability of each is.
Okay. So there's a chance that we may hear on the other two sometime soon?
I would expect to hear on all four of them fairly soon.
Yeah, okay, I mean, so that we might actually undertake them even this calendar year, you think, or is that too ambitious?
The lighting ones, yeah, they might undertake, depending on what the company's availability and availability of the products are, I would expect probably that they might undertake those this calendar year. The what, the changes to, of course, the changes to the HVAC system, from what my understanding is now of it, it is truly the small section that is air conditioning and around the office and whatever, so if that's the case, I would. and whatever, so if that's the case, I would actually expect that they'd be able to do that fairly soon, too. If it had anything to do with the heating, I'd probably say they'd probably wait until later in the fiscal year.
Okay, all right. Good, all right, well, hopefully we'll hear from them fairly soon. Anything else under pending items? Any updates on anything?
We're still waiting for Chapter 91 license for the bridge over Manhattan, is that right?
Nothing else on the pending items?
This was raised to our Rep. Senator when they were in.
Oh, right, right.
And they said that they would be active on it.
Right, yeah. Yeah, this is for the footbridge over the Manhattan, through the Ghanai, Manhattan Menace? Okay, yeah, I don't think we've heard.
It's a DEP Chapter 91 permit. I still have some colleague friends at the Secretary's Office, and I could make an inquiry if it wouldn't be, I mean, if it's still the case.
I don't know, let me check with Art and see if they actually heard anything.
Okay, yeah, we --
I think that some additional inquiry could dislodge this. That's what the rep said, and I guess he sent a letter or made an inquiry and heard nothing.
Uh-huh, all right.
But if it's not already granted, I'd be happy to call Stephanie Cooper in the Secretary's Office.
Well, let's find out what we know.
Yeah, I'll check with Art, and I'll also check with George.
Yeah, okay, because if something came in, it may not have made it down to our level here.
And I don't want to muddy those waters.
But if not, I think we could probably take you up on, any kind of additional inquiry would not be a bad idea, probably, just to keep, this has been lodged for quite a while, and it needs to get unlodged.
It would be a friendly inquiry rather than
Right.
obligatory response to a legislator.
Correct, yeah.
And hopefully we might learn something.
Yeah, okay. Well, why don't we see what we know about that, and if not, we will put that on your table here.
Okay.
All right. Okay, I don't think there's anything else in terms of any of the pending items, anything offhand that we know about. Select Board meetings are already set for November 7th and 21st, and I believe tonight we kind of agreed that we would have to hold also on the 16th, so let us make that note.
Thursday, the 16th.
Thursday, the 16th, at the same time and place, and I think that's it. We have no executive sessions tonight, so I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Joy moved. Have a second, please.
Who seconded?
Nobody yet. Second?
I did.
Oh, Stephen, okay. I hear it out of my right ear first, sorry. Okay, we are adjourned at about 8:53.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.